Again. Calling to order, meeting of the Northwood Beach Park and Recreation District, special meeting Thursday, July 30th. The time is approximately 7:03 PM. Commissioner and Chairman Merrill is not present, and so Vice Chair Singleton, me, presiding over the meeting. Commissioners Holly and Hoffmeyer are present, and it looks like we need to swear in Cecil Pierce, Pierce, correct? Okay.
Can we do that, though, since this is a special meeting and it's not on the agenda? I'm not sure.
Well, if we voted to change the agenda, I'm sure that we can do that. Can we not do that?
Well, it was a special meeting.
Okay.
That's what I'm just wondering.
Okay. Because I brought it up before we started recording.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I didn't recognize you. Sorry, your hair looks nice. Anyway, sorry, unrelated. All right, so if we can, and I apologize, this is unknown to me, if you can, please rise.
Do we need to make an agenda change first?
Sure. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to make an amendment or a change to the agenda to include the swearing in of Mr. Pierce.
I second that.
Are there, we don't?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be a motion.
No, do we have any other agenda changes while we're on that topic?
No.
Do you have any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. All right, so we will put the swearing in of Mr. Pierce at the, before the kayak bids opened.
You read out there, but yet it's your own name.
I should have.
And you know what position?
Position five.
Correct. Yes, okay. Exactly.
Okay. All right, Cecil Pierce, so I'm going to swear, I am a firm that will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the city of Washington that will faithfully and personally perform the discharge duties of Northwood Beach Park and Recreation Commissioner, Recreation Commissioner, according to the law to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, appreciate it. And welcome, Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you.
And so for our first order of business, we have the kayak bids to be opened. Very good. And do we, okay. I'm trying to remember how we did this last time. Sorry, the rigmarole. But, all right, so we have, it looks like we have three bids.
We have four bids.
We have four bids.
Cool.
And I will go ahead and open, this is bid for two.
All right. Is that the only bid for number two?
Yes.
Okay.
Bid for number two, this is for the Yellow Venture Eski, or Eski, however they pronounce it.
Is that number two from the original list, correct?
It's number, it's number seven on the original list, and number two on the revised list.
Okay, so we had a number one, I didn't realize we had a revised list. So did we have a number one on the revised list?
We did have a number one, and if we did not get it on.
Okay, I just want to be clear for the record. So we had a number one on the revised list, there are no bids for that kayak, so this is for number two.
And the bid is for $500 to Eugene Buford.
Buford B-U-F-O-R-D?
B-U-F-F-A-R-D. Or Buffard?
No, I think you pronounced it right, I just.
How do you pronounce your name?
Buffer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Close.
I could see that.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We slaughtered it, okay.
With all due respect.
The next one is for kayak three.
Okay, so the winning bid for kayak number two was $500 to Eugene. Mr. Buffard. Excellent. Congratulations.
Number three, which was number eight on the original list.
And number three is, is there a description?
There is, it's a Green Venture Eski sea kayak. The bid is $500, again, to Mr. Buffard.
And that was also the only bid for the?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, so kayak number three, bid for $500 for Mr. Buffard.
There's number eight on the actual kayak, but we do have some number eights here as well. So I will make sure that once I look in these bids, if they match the description of the suit as well, because they're only written on the form. We have some people reading the original list, so I will want to work these up and make sure that they are not going to match the descriptions.
We only had four that was being bid on, right?
We did have five that were able to bid on.
Oh, okay.
And these are both, this one says it's for number eight.
Yep, and the original on the, on the original kayak list, it was number eight, and since these are listed as number eight, I'm going to check them as well. This one is for number eight on the original list. It is the Green Venture kayak with the rudder, for $555 to Leon Gander, Leon Gander.
D-A-N-D-E-R?
G-A-N-D-E-R.
Oh, Gander.
Correct.
All right, so we currently have two bids on the same kayak.
We actually have three.
All right.
This one is also for the same kayak. It is number eight, the Green Venture Eski 15-foot kayak. The bid is $450 from Paul McKenna. I will pass those over to you.
All right, so it looks like we have, so in this case, it looks like for the original kayak number eight, updated kayak number three, the winning bid is $555 to Mr. Gander. Is Mr. Gander present? No? Okay, just making sure. All right, and so then we have.
The number two kayak as well, which is also one of which was the old number seven, was to Mr. Buffer.
Right, oh, I said that one already. Yeah, I'm just trying to state the final for each one of them as we did before.
I have a question on the kayak number one. Since there was no bids received on kayak number one, could I place a bid this time? So you guys want to relist it?
Let me go look. The bids had to be received by 5:30. We did actually put a closing time for the bids, that they were, that they were to be accepted no later than 5:30. On today, we will have to relist it with another closing.
Well, we have, so we have actually on the agenda kayaks in unfinished business, and that was to cover anything that.
Was left over.
Correct. Yeah, the discussion of that, so unfortunately, based on the rules as we had to define them, we would love, I think we personally would love to accept your bid, however, we cannot do that, because we have kind of a strict set of rules we're trying to follow. So unfortunately, we're sorry, but no. I think it pains everyone at this table to say that. But thank you. And, and so what we'll do is we'll discuss what the process moving forward will be. But congratulations on kayak number two, and, and look for what we do if you're interested. All right, so moving on, do we have a public comment? Is there, do we do a list? Sorry, I.
So, there you go. Yeah, kind of careful for things. I appreciate the diligence and the meeting changes, all the issues, all of those things, but all, once again, through the years, that it is so critical that you all, to your core, embrace the understanding that you cannot ignore what you heard from all of the other people. So I don't know that the last time the meeting was canceled, but you could do that, how come you made it? You know, that you made a decision not to have the meeting without actually having meetings, the board can't act unless it's called together about it. And you can't come in here with your commissioner hats on, gather information, you cannot do anything unless the board says you can do that, and, you know, as Christian reminded of, apart from me, you can do nothing as well, obviously, you know, that's as board members, you have to know, as part from the board saying, you have the blessing to act on behalf of the board, you can't act. And so it's tempting, I know, but I think that's just got to be drilled down, because there's a lot of things that did end up getting crossed. The, on the proposal later, the program recommendations, just a couple of things, price increases, I looked in, I'm sorry, it was Mayor June, I looked back to 2013, which was the year we lost $92,000, and stuff like that, I forget how that happened, or how that got paid. And we made more in 2013 at that point than we have earned at this point in revenue, and yet we had a price increase since then. And the whole research on how to increase prices and not lose customers, the bottom line is that, and customers have to feel like they have greater value. And we have a lot of progress here, but I think that you're a long way from that, and that being a way to solve a revenue problem I have. I personally think the way to solve the revenue problem is to increase the district's book rate. And there are a lot of great ways to do that, and that aren't really financially draining, but you've got to be creative and you've got to be able to get by. That, some of the things about the employee discounts, I think, are administrative nightmare, and I suspect that people still listen to some of that, and maybe that, and how you know how they do that. And finally, with public records request, I have a request, and it's been in for months, and it's not been fulfilled, I don't think it hasn't been fulfilled because of neglect, it's because of a lack of ability to find those documents, those are pretty critical documents, registered I have. And I don't know if they're not found, because there's been an administrative error, because they were taken from the district, or because the board never did its work. But I think that it's really critical for the board to know, and for you to get to the bottom of that, because those are, when you look at what happened with Island Transit, and some of those questions about administrative reviews, those questions are going to come up, and there needs to be an answer. So I hope that you will do that, and, and get clear answers from that.
Thank you.
I have a few comments as well. First of all, my name is Shane Hoffmeyer, I think most of you know that. You know, I guess I'd like to second what she, the first part of what she said about the procedure of the previous meeting being canceled. You know, I caught that immediately as well, and I understood that to be illegal. So it is what it is, mistakes happen. Secondly, what she said, you know, definitely, I hope the board continues to, and the staff continues to focus on the importance of honoring public records requests. I think that there's definitely been great strides in that area. Furthermore, I think, you know, most of you are reading the newspaper, probably seeing that I'm running for one of the seats. So I look forward to working with you guys. You know, for the, for the couple of years up until the time I decided to file, I think I had a, you know, better attendance in these, these meetings than a lot of board members did even. At the time I decided to file, I thought, you know what, I know what's going on there, how about I step away and see what it looks like from outside? And you know, boy, from the outside, it, it looks like nothing, you know, just radio silence, pretty much. And I, you know, I think a lot of you guys have just relied on what the public knows, or whatever the Woodby News Times decides to write. And I think, you know, luckily, you know, the Woodby News Times has some, some rather responsible journalism that goes on, that they report accurately what happens, you know. Unfortunately, unless it's flaming car crashes through apartment complex, it, it, it's hard for it to even make the paper. And even if it does make the paper, I got four free clicks a month, and it's probably not the story I'm going to click on. So I thought, you know, so, so in the last couple of months, I've asked people, you know, what their perception of the Northwood Beach Park and Recreation District is, and in general, the, the, the look is of bewilderment, and what the hell are you talking about? Well, the Oak Harbor Pool, you know, as soon as it comes up, Oak Harbor Pool, they, they tell that they've heard or read enough. You know, they feel that, you know, everything's done and safe, there's nothing but corruption, that more people have quit this board than the rest of county government combined. You know, whether that's the case or not, it, it's pretty easy sitting here to know that a lot of good stuff goes on in here, but I don't really see, I don't see much of an effort to communicate that to the community. You know, I think there's been more of an effort lately, you know, with, with the director talking to some of the schools, and able to get a few good stories in the newspaper. You know, even, even one of those good stories, though, the headline might have been enough for me not to click on it, of people getting some free. If you heard the story, that wasn't the case, but the, that's the way it appeared from the title, and you move on, I guess. So, you know, I guess the biggest reason I decided to run, and what I would ask you guys, and maybe it can be taken care of before then, you know, is there a way to ensure that the, that the agenda is posted on the website 72 hours before any board meeting? Is there a way to advertise anything and everything this board does on Facebook? You know, it's nearly free to advertise there. Channel 10, a lot of people actually watch Channel 10, and it is free to advertise on there, and I certainly think that everything this, this board and this district, that should be on there.
Could we ask you to wrap up? Sorry, it's three minutes, so if we could just ask you to wrap up, sorry, Shane, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's fine, and I guess, so that's another thing, yeah, yeah, it's three minutes, it's going to be unfortunate, I would like to see it, unfortunately, everybody. You know, I've seen people ram along for 10 or 12 minutes here, and, you know, I have nothing further, I have nothing further to add.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, are there any board issues?
Thank you both, pleasantly.
Okay, all right, do we have, do we have the minutes? Sorry, I'm just, do we have the minutes from these meetings? So we, next is minutes approval?
No, I finished the May minutes Tuesday night, and it just wasn't enough time to get them out to you guys to review them before this meeting, so I will get them to you next week. And again, I wasn't here in June, but I guess I will listen to the recordings and write them from there.
Okay, so our expectation, so we have our expectation, whether you do them or Sean does them, as he has been out, is that we'll have all of these, including this one, I'm just sitting, I'm just asking.
No, no, and I think we should have for, for the August meeting, correct?
For the August regular meeting?
Yes.
Since we're talking about minutes, on the, on the website, since that was brought up, there is no minutes for 2015, I believe, on Oak Harbor, on the OakCarbberpool.com. If we could somehow possibly, you know, at least up until May, I guess, that's been approved.
So you're referring to the, to the written minutes as opposed to the audio?
I'm talking to the written minutes. You know, also, if you were to go back to 2013, there's some broken links. You know, what comes to my mind, I think, is October, November, December, maybe, 2013. There's like three or four meetings there that you can't click on, so if maybe somebody could look at that, since we're talking about minutes, thank you very much. I think the YouTube was up to date, possibly.
I believe it was.
The audio, I thought it was.
The audio.
It was just those written minutes.
Have you been able to get to the YouTube minutes via YouTube? Because I have to go through the commissioners, that, it's a, it's a tortuous path, and I think you're supposed to be able to get it to it.
You can just go to YouTube.
Can you? Because I have not.
Can anybody that wants to look at the minutes for the, you go to OakCarbberpool.com, and if you go to About Us, I think it is, and then you go into Board of Commissioners, and you can click on Minutes, or you can click on Audio. The Audio is going to take you to our YouTube channel.
No, I know, but you, for earlier ones, you could type in.
Yeah.
YouTube, go directly to YouTube, NWPRD, and it would bring you the minutes. We're just, there's some disconnect in how we're doing it now.
I'll, I'll look at it, too. Sorry, I don't like the minutes.
It's just, it's less, it's a little tortuous, rather than being able to go to YouTube.
Thank you.
I just need to know what to put in the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. If we can move on to voucher review? Sorry, if we can just check them and verify them, and if we could go to voucher review.
May I have a motion, please?
I move that we validate vouchers 6734 through 6770 for the amount of $20,464, no, $20,464.34, and transfer, payroll transfer from MNO account to payroll account of $42,258.81.
I second that.
All right, we're moved by Commissioner Holly and seconded by Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Is there any discussion? I will actually then start, if no one has anything right now, I'll, I wanted to give everyone else a chance, but I have a, okay, but while you're finding it.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just had a question about the network solutions. I, I know we have an update on the internet. I, I'm just really concerned that if you look at the P and L, we're 525% of our annual budget for computer maintenance at this point, and I'm, I would be thrilled if there was an update that said that these issues are resolved, but we've already spent a few thousand dollars, and my understanding is we're still having the same issues. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. We are, the, the computer issues themselves with our actual computer, majority of those have been solved. The one that is not solved is our internet service, which we have been going around and around frontier. We are now able to deal with frontier directly instead of using network solutions plus to do it for us. Right now, I've been trying to work with another internet provider to get service to us that would be more reliable than what we are currently having, and I'm not having any luck with them, however, they have indicated that they will try to send the tech out sometime in the next two weeks to reevaluate us.
Okay, but I'm, I'm specifically, so, thank you for the update, and I'm kind of specifically asking more about, so, we had had a previous, and I'm, I'm, I could look it up, but.
$900.
Thank you, I knew it was over $900 for this, for what I think is the same thing.
Yes.
I'm just really concerned about that spend and not getting things fixed.
We have had them coming in and dealing with a lot of these internet problems for us, because they had asked us to.
Sure.
We found out, that we found out that wasn't necessary, and we've been dealing with most of those ourselves now.
Okay, so.
So they have been contacting.
So what, what value did they provide for $1,200? I, I, I'm not trying to grill you, I'm just trying to understand what value they provided for that, for that amount.
Some of the things that we did actually need them to do is, we did have some server issues, which they were able to resolve for us. We also had some computer failures, which we needed them to come in and take care of. We had even asked about moving one workstation to another. Joanne?
Do you want that to be?
I don't think we need it for these purposes, well, unless somebody, sorry, I can't speak for everyone. I, I think, I think the thing that I, I think the two things that concern me are the fact that we're over 500% of our annual budget, and it's, that's for the end of June. And the other one is that if it's not fixed, this, this seems to be unknown costs that just continue to multiply, and so I want to understand what we're doing to get that under control, or where we're going to find the money elsewhere, unfortunately.
We are, we are actually dealing with a lot of these ourselves now, and we have the tools to do it.
Okay, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't see anything more like this?
I'm hoping that we don't, unless we have some weird network failure that is unforeseen at this point, we are hoping that these bills will not continue to go lower.
Okay, because I, I think, just the thing, at least, I, I think the thing we have to understand is, we have a perfectly balanced budget, which, it was pretty darn close.
It was pretty darn close.
Yeah. That, that where we overspend, we're going to have to find a place to underspend, and, and I know that's going to be painful, because that's kind of, either that or we have to make more revenue.
We are, we are working on ways that we can address a lot of these issues ourselves.
I am just curious about the, let's see, 6742 and 6743, do we typically buy cleaning supplies retail? I would just think that we would probably be better off if we used someone wholesaling or what have you. I, I would imagine this place goes through a lot of cleaning supplies.
Some of them, like trash bags that maybe they're digging from for rice, but I don't know.
If we are actually putting in a cost of order, and we, traditionally, when we put in a cost of order for our concessions, Julie will come around to the senior staff and say, hey, there's a big order going out, because it saves us so much on shipping if we order everything together. We can throw in for our cleaning supplies if that's the cheapest vendor, or we can order from somebody else if they're cheaper, including shipping. With the increased amount of people that we have had through this, and we have run out of this quarter than we anticipated, and we have to supplement immediately or face trash everywhere.
Thank you. And then the last one, 6770, sorry, I don't necessarily want to alter the summary, but I, I wasn't, I didn't really understand what a stale date payroll check is, I apologize if I should know what that is.
Checks that were issued to employees last year that were not.
Cashed.
And so we had to reissue it?
Well, we had to reissue it from our petty cash, because paychecks can't issue it because of taxes, because it has been, the taxes didn't file. So what ends up happening when they, when checks don't get deposited, when they become stale dated, is the funds get, get deposited back into our payroll.
But it's, so it's a, it's basically, money was kind of shipped around, but we didn't have a net loss, it was, we had already expended that money.
Anyway.
Yeah.
But, but, there is a, a fee when paychecks has to, when they stale date a check, and they refund the check back, they take out $20 to refund that check.
Okay, thank you. Just one more thing, regarding the ESD late fees of $415.38, voucher 6765, why did that happen?
It's Q1, I guess there was a bill floating somewhere, like towards the end of 2014, that I didn't know that. And when I found it, that's when I sort of realized what that was. But that was for, they send it out.
So we paid the bill, we paid the actual bill earlier, but, but there was a late charge related to that bill that we, and we were unaware that it was late to begin with?
And they're, they're quarterly, so I actually do have another one that's due.
What was the total bill? That was, I mean, that's a huge late fee for.
I was, was it maybe $800? I was going to say, it was just under $2,000.
But those, those late fees tend to.
Accumulate interest.
Quickly, like after, after a very short period. Yeah.
Yes, these were, this was the same issue where I had to call them for days and days to even get an answer as to why we're paying it, until I finally.
So you, you feel like you have, I'm sorry, but you feel, go ahead.
Have we put something in place where this doesn't?
That was my question.
The late fee?
Yeah.
Oh, now, no, now I know what I'm looking for.
So yes, yes, we have.
This is just something.
Thank you.
That was lying around in there, the town.
From last year.
From cleaning.
Well, it's, Q1 isn't last year, but, I'm not knocking you, I'm just saying that it's not last year.
It was laying around.
I'd like to ask a question about this. So, you know, I mean, every, any job I've ever had, so, excuse me, it's worked for the government, and there's always been somebody to back me up, my backup, had a backup, I mean, it's just that, that layers of people covering. If something were to happen to you, you know, do you, would you know to look for this?
Yes.
If something were to happen to both of them, is there somebody that would know to where, see where I'm going with this, to where there's, there's some, you know, basically some document somewhere that says, hey, you know, this is due on this date, this is due on this date, this is due on this date, oh, by the way, don't forget this. I mean, do we have those in place?
We have procedures manuals, in fact, actually, we were just talking recently about the need to update a few of them as we have, as we have shuffled some of our tasks around between us, but the three of us that work back in here, we are pretty aware of what each other is doing.
Okay.
And one of them would get very ill, and will be able to need to pick up, I'm pretty confident to get it done.
Okay.
Quick question. As far as this here, is it something like, you know, file that says bill's paid, bills need to be paid, so that was a filing system, so whatever's been paid, it's easy to go to, or you could go. been paid, it's easy to go to, where you could go to it, you could go to it, or somebody else could go to, where it's obvious it says bills paid or bills need to be paid. I mean, however you're gonna work.
Yes, they, they are actually, when bills are paid, they are put in an envelope with the date, how much it is for that week, and the, um, warrant number. So, it, it is all filed.
She's gonna order it.
I am, I pay the bill, just to be clear.
Okay.
The only time I sat on this because I, I didn't know what it was, and if you look at that, that's Q one twenty-fifteen and Q four twenty-fourteen. So, it's just something I-
If, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to know about the rekeying of the building. Why did we rekey the building?
Uh, we had a, an employee who left us. They went on a leave of absence. The employee did have keys to the building. We asked, you know, that they were on a leave of absence. We made every attempt to contact this employee to get their key back. We have, were, were very unsuccessful in all the attempts that we made to contact this employee, and then we were aware of some criminal activity that this employee was involved in, that we felt having a key to the building, that that employee would put the district at risk if we were there to get into the building.
Did we go with the kind of locks that you can, kind of, like, the smart locks that are out now, to where if this happens again?
We don't, yeah, we, we don't have that money.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Yeah, I, I asked them for what they could do that would protect us the best for the least of my money.
And I had one last thing, and, uh, there's an employee, an employment instructional incentive, um, in, in the, in the future, if we could, I, I don't know how you all feel, so I don't want to speak up for y'all, but I don't really need to know the name of the employee.
Just put them in employee instructional set.
Yeah, I mean-
Got it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, it's fine. Just like you, yeah, delete the name of the patrons, that's fine.
Yeah, normally, we have only done it if it was, like, if an issue, like, a vaccination, but, yeah.
Well, I think-
There are a couple on there, that's, I think, yeah, I don't need to know.
So, do you want that for all employee things?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, except for the visa thing.
I, I, yeah, well, I, I do think, I do think, I do think on the head coach, though, we need to know that that is the in-wat coach. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, that's true. No, that's a good point.
Okay, um, and I don't know if this is something that I just didn't notice for the last nine months. Um, I'm, so I was looking at this list, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven things that are at the top of this, the treasurer's report, that I could not find on the voucher report. So, were vouchers not written for those?
I think it's because if she's dropping a packet off at the end of the month, then they're getting cut the following month, so you'll see it on a different report. Kind of like a credit card statement overlaps, so you'd have to look at the previous.
And yet, it says June twenty-fifteen, which I assume would be from the first of June until-
But if she's dropped it off at the very end of May, the county may not cut the check till the beginning of June, so it'll show up on the June report.
None of these amounts are on this.
Right, but where, are the voucher numbers on there? Sorry, I'm, I don't need to.
Well, and what's the date that they were cut on the treasurer's report?
Wait, and so there were six?
Because I know we've run into that a little bit before when we're checking things off. All those six-three ones, are those the ones here?
So, they would have been, 'cause I couldn't check, I, I figured-
They would have been dropped off at the county at the very end of May.
So, if, so today-
At the end of May, or, oh, okay.
At the end of May, so they would be on our May voucher report.
Or-
July.
July, June.
June.
No, they would have been on our May voucher report and cut at the county at the beginning of June.
But so, this would have been in the report from last June, which I don't have, 'cause I wasn't, okay. All right, um, the meat entry fees for three swim meets. Um, I would, I want to hear next month that we got every penny of that back. I just am interested to see, that, did it all get paid?
Um-
No, I'm just, it, or unless you know now that, yeah, every penny.
I know that we have about, I want to say it was eighty dollars, is that what it added, probably? Between sixty and eighty dollars that we will not get back. There was some sort of error in the meat entry file, which said that allowed him to enter swimmers in events that they did not qualify for. So, when they got to the meat, they discovered that the swimmers would be unable to participate. It was not the swimmer's fault, it was not the swimmer's parents' fault. Um, so, the swimmers are not, they were billed and then they were credited for those amounts.
And when I asked him if he could have avoided that, he said it would have been difficult without clear communication from the meat directors.
But we can't get the mon, did we try getting the money back from the meat?
I do not know what conversation he's had with them. I know he was going to talk to them about that, yeah.
I, next month, I want to hear what happened with that conversation, just, 'cause it's like, uh, you know, we're told constantly, it's like, "Oh, these meats don't cost the district anything," and yet, here you're telling me, you say sixty dollars or eighty dollars?
It's between sixty and eighty, I don't remember exactly. I have it all totaled and there, but-
Yeah, okay. Um, the kayaks notice of intent to sell. Did we spend this much last time when we went to sell? So, it, okay. So, when we finally finished selling the kayaks, I would like to see a financial statement of, "This is what we, we spent to sell them, and then we made this much. This is what we were told we were going to be able to sell them." And I know, you know, but I would be real interested, 'cause we were told one thing, that this is what will, you know, that's why we bought the new kayak, being told it was a good deal. So, I just would be interested to see the final thing, so, next time, um-
If, if we could save that for, if we could save that for the discussion of the kayaks, and that way, we can create a real action item for that.
Oh, okay.
Since it's on, it's still on the agenda.
Okay. And what's, May twenty-fifteen D O R, I didn't know what that meant.
Department of Revenue, our sales tax?
Ah, thank you, good.
Any other discussion? I think that was all that I had. All right. So, if there is no further discussion, let's see, it has been, um, or rather, the motion on the table is to approve the district vouchers sixty-seven thirty-four through sixty-seven seventy, the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, and, uh, payroll transfers from the MNO account to payroll in the amount of forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, motion passed unanimously. All right, moving, hold on. Okay, unfinished business, new director search. Do we have an, we do, update from the subcommittee?
All right, my notes. Um, I got three comments on that. One, um, I've actually had a change of opinion about what we should be looking for, and I know, because we came to the board and we got an approval from them, so I just wanted to say, this is what my thoughts are, and we're not gonna make, I don't really want to make any decisions tonight, but I just want to tell you this, what we're, what I'm thinking. Um, and rather than necessarily having somebody who's pool-centric, I think more importantly, that we get a leader, a strategic planner, with some budget background, just 'cause, uh, in nine months, it's like, I kind of think the pool stuff is something we can learn, you can learn easily, the other stuff is harder. Um, that's number one. Two, um, a couple members of the community have expressed interest in the director job to our chairman, um, and, um, we have to get the yoke off of poor Ms. Miller's back, 'cause, um, she is being overworked and burdened, and we've, it's already been seven months now. So, um, this is something I recommend that everybody think about until Sean gets back, and then the whole board can talk about it, and decide what we want to do. Maybe what we should do is have an interim person appointed from the community that would be more the strategic planner, leader kind of person, rather than going out and finding another pool guy. And then, we still have to do go through that process, but, um, anyway. Um, and three, I would ask, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, are you interested in being on the committee still?
I talked to Sean about this, and what I feel would be important at this time would be for Cecil Pierce to work with you. The reason is, you know, I'm going to be off the board at the end of December, and it's paramount, I think, that you all work together to, to find this individual, to take the pool forward. I would encourage to add to what you said, is, when you really look at what this person has to, to be, it's that person to rebuild the image of the Northwoodby Park and Rec District, more than anything, and that has a vision to take us forward. You know, part of that may be a person that understands grant writing. You know, there, there was a bunch of money that was available through the stimulus packages around the oh-nine, ten timeframe, that if we would have had the right person, you know, we, we probably could have did some amazing things there at this pool. You know, if, if we could look for somebody that's, you know, a visionary, somebody that has that ability to communicate with the public, and, and really rebuild this tainted image that we have really, uh, that we have. And I don't know what that means, you know, I, I wonder sometimes if we're gonna be able to afford that person. And then, of course, then, you know, it gets into something very hard, and that is combining tasks to free up money, 'cause it's paramount, we have two years to find that person that's going to ensure our success here, and who's going to take us, you know, down the road where we need and want to be. So, I would like to see us discuss some of that. What do we need to do to get that right person? It may be that we have to pay that person more than what we, uh, we've been willing to in the past. To do that, it may be that we have to combine tasks in other places. But, but we got one shot to get this right, and, and we, we, I think we all agree with that. It's, we gotta get it right. And I agree with you, seven months, you know, it's, that's, that's an awful long time to ask you to be the interim, so.
And I would say, you've done an awesome job.
You have.
Honestly.
You have.
Nothing to take away, but it's like, I know it's driving you mad.
We'll go on the record as this, I don't think anybody here has the understanding of a pool, and, and specifically this pool, uh, that you have, Erica, and, uh, yeah.
I don't think anyone could have stepped in and done a better job than you have done carrying two and now three, you know, hats as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, I guess when Sean gets back, we, we will ask him as the chair to make it official that the subcommittee be, whatever, how he wants it to be.
Can the acting chair just say?
Can you?
I believe so.
I think you can.
Yeah, so, instead, so you are, you-
I would like to pu- pull my name back from that, and, and I would recommend that you consider Cecil Pierce to be on that subcommittee.
All right, so we'll, we'll modify the director, um, search committee, and to include, uh, still include, um, Commissioner Holly and to include Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, one thing also, sit there and looking over the duties of the director and stuff like that there. I mean, it has stuff, you know, that he should be doing and stuff like, attend board meetings, write up stuff for the board meetings, and more related to general staff-type stuff, or the pool-related stuff. So, right here, you know, have some good stuff in it, financial conditions, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that's what we should sit there and be looking at, when we sit there and doing it. If we need to change these here somewhat, then we need to change them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but I think this needs to be some kind of guideline for what he's going to do and what we look for.
And so, we'll look to you guys to have a report for the regular August meeting?
Sounds good.
Well, when is Sean coming back? Uh, I don't know. I'm wondering if, you know when Sean's coming back? Cause he left.
About the time that he reappears was what I heard.
Well, he's gone away, I heard for three weeks.
Yeah, that's what I heard as well.
And he left.
Well, if we can, so, what are you proposing?
I, I was just-
What are you asking?
If he was gonna be back more than a week before our next scheduled meeting, I would recommend we have a special meeting, it's that important. But, if he's not getting back until within a week of a regular meeting, then fine, we can wait for the regular meeting.
Okay, so, so at this point, then, let's plan for the spec, for the, uh, the regular meeting.
Okay.
However, if you'd like to reach out to him when you're ready, and if that's prior and he's available-
Oh, okay.
He can call a special meeting, how about that?
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, strategic planning.
Nothing.
Yeah, it's, it's an existing, um, I don't believe there are any updates, um, but it's existing unfinished business, so I just wanted to-
No, no, and that's good, we just don't have anything to report.
Correct, okay. Um, let me get a second. Oh, okay, sorry. Um, program review.
Are you gonna start?
Uh, I can, I can.
I thought that was, yeah, that was, you were gonna start with yours.
Okay, then, then that's what we'll do. All right, so, Commissioner Holly and I were appointed to a subcommittee to do, to conduct a program review, and, so, just to, yeah, there-
Slides in your private-
There are little, yeah, there are little handouts here, a little bulleted list here. And so, just to give you, and apologize, the date is currently incorrect. Um, but, so the, the idea for tonight is just to talk about the review process, um, the facility maintenance list, um, a fee, schedule proposal, and the employee discount policy. Um, and so, the program review process, so, the idea was that this month, we would talk about the overarching processes that apply across the board. Um, we recognized that when we started to get into this, it was, um, the, the order of magnitude is, is huge. Um, and so, and so we're kind of trying to take it a piece at a time, um, as opposed to coming with one huge thing that we want to try to discuss and cover at once. Um, that we wanted to, well, of course, share recommendations, and then, we're, we're trying to socialize some of this, so if it seems like a good idea, we want to move forward, we can vote on it. If it's, hey, wanna think about it or discuss it, we can do that as well. So, discuss, and to determine which items can move forward and which require additional consideration. And then, for any items requiring additional time, I, yeah, well, yeah, the original, well, let's, uh, sorry, I didn't, uh, update this, I apologize for that, but, um, that we would, we would discuss those inputs at the next regular meeting. I think that's, that's the only thing that's really fair. And then, moving forward, so that's kind of what we're gonna talk about briefly tonight. I think it's briefly, well, I, maybe it's not, actually, that's not fair. Um, but then, moving forward, what we would do is discuss every month, a couple of programs, um, in a, in a bit more detail. So, trying to cover everything over a period of time, because it is such a large thing. So, that's , I talked about what we're gonna talk about, and, let's see. So, so, one thing that, um, the maintenance critical items list, so, during our budget discussions, we got that, we got this great list from Matt of, here are all the things that need to be fixed in our facility, and I think it was really eye-opening for us. Um, what our recommendation is, is to formalize the list and adopt it as an ongoing working document, so that it would be, so, add a little information to it, so that we can understand the criticality of things, um, and then ask that, that be updated on a monthly basis and included in our packet. Um, I think we can't lose sight of all the things that need to be done around here, um, and this is a way to keep it fresh for us, and understand when new things come on the list, um, and hopefully start that in August. We have the list. I would like to see, personally, you know, we, we suggest that it gets reformatted a bit, but nothing that's really difficult. Um, and then, we could review and discuss it at, uh, the monthly board meeting, starting in August. Um, and then, looking optimistically, once the critical items are diminished, um, such as things like needing a new roof, um, which is pretty monumental, um, but, but once, you know, if we're, we're looking at it ongoing, once the critical items are diminished, then we could actually look at adding improvements that we want to see around the, the thing.
May I please interrupt?
Well, you can contribute. It's not really an interruption, but you can contribute.
I would just like to, uh, let our kayak bidders know-
I was just thinking that.
That, um, you guys are more than welcome to sit through the meeting. However, if you would like to pay, pick up bigger kayaks, you may do so at the front desk, you know, personal checks, however you'd like to pay for them, cash or credit card, it'd be fine, or you may stay with the meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay?
I was just thinking that.
Read your mind.
No, 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 we're just, yeah.
Well, I said, you're more than welcome to sit through it. I mean, we'd love having you, but-
We fight that up here.
Just in case.
We enjoy having you here.
Have you ever been to, uh, Alastair? Real quick, okay, with kayak to Hope Island tomorrow. Have fun, man.
I just got mine on track.
Okay.
I thought you just bought two.
Yeah, we didn't win that, there was a higher bid.
No.
Well, let me ask you something. If we could go back, if, if they, if they have, if they bid on one, can't that, can't they have the other one for the minimum bid? No? Okay.
We gotta play by the- We gotta play by the rules. Otherwise, otherwise we get, get in trouble.
Is it just one? Mm-hmm.
And it's a person that's already been, don't claim it, will you guys talk?
Yes, we will, that we can do.
Thank you.
I wonder if they have to fund it.
That's funny, by the way. That's funny.
Okay, back to the program review.
Great, so back to the facilities, facility maintenance list. So, we can move on if we want to move on, or we can motion if we want to move... Okay, well, if we're gonna, okay, we're moving on, then there's a fee, fee schedule proposal, which I will talk about.
Um, this is not a surprise, you don't have to spend a lot of time to not look at it. We are not gonna decide any of this. I just wanted to put it in front of you so you have time to think about it, and we'll talk about it, vote on it, next regular meeting. So, the basis for it, and I know it's a lot of numbers, but the basis, if you just look at that very top line...
Does Ms. Wong have one? Sorry, I didn't see it.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't notice. If you would hand that to...
If she, if she wants it.
Yeah, if you want it. And this will be posted on the building, it'll be posted on the website tomorrow, hopefully. I will send it to you guys, and you can, you know, if you can get it posted, you get it posted, if we're having, anyway. So the basic one thing to remember is that the adult regular, you walk in the door price is currently $3.50. The committee is recommending that it be $5. Staff recommended, when they did a look, they basically, for most of their things, they basically did kind of a 10% increase across the board. Um, Anna Cordis is set at $6, Bellingham does $4.50, $5 if, $4.50 is if you're a Bellingham resident, and then they have a non-resident of Bellingham price, Port Townsend is $5. And so then, every other price is based on that $5 fee. So that, um, for a 10, 10 punch visit, um, which would be $50, you get a 16% reduction to $42 if you're a normal adult person. Except we also have, we do have an in and out of district price for the punch card, and everything that's multiple visits has, um, in or out. And then, so if you are not in the district, you would normally pay $60, you get a 15% deep, um, price cut, and you pay $51. So, that would be $4.20 a visit if you were in district for a 10 punch card, $4.70 if you're out of district. And quarter, the price per visit is less. If you visit, and I sort of said, okay, in a three-month period, if you went three times a week in a four-week thing, it's gonna be 36 visits, that's how I got the price per visit. So, it works out if you visit three times a week, it makes sense for you to get a quarterly pass. Semi-annuals for six months, it works down to $4 a visit, again, if you're a three-times-a-week person. If you comes more times, whoa, you're even better. Aerobics... Aerobics was a 20% increase, um... And, I don't know, does anyone have any questions about what you see on here?
Are we going to talk about this?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it, but I was just gonna say, we're not gonna make any decisions. So I wanted to give it to you, you can look at it over the month and think about it, but if you have any questions about it...
So I think, I, I think the, so if it is helpful, there's a lot here.
Well, I would ask that this not, I personally do not want to see this posted in this building for the public to see. And I don't, I think that this, I mean, I'll just, I think this is a death sentence. The rates, this would be the largest increase this pool has seen ever.
You know why I want to post it? Because, one, we're not doing anything in the dark, and I want public input. And we were gonna have a focus group, and it's like, it's too darn hard. I, I asked people, I would see in the pool and stuff, would you be interested in being a focus group? And they, "Yeah, I guess." And I said, "Please leave your name and number for me at the front desk." Not one did. And so, I don't think people want to be in a focus group. But I know people are gonna be interested in this topic, and it's probably gonna be very negative. But I would be interested for them to hear why specifically not.
Can I, can I ask a question? So how would you, so instead, how would you prefer that this be socialized? Would you rather that we review it first and come up with, with a, um, a, one that the board recommends and then socialize it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because I think that you, my opinion is, just my opinion, you post this immediately, people are going to be angry.
Okay, well, let's, but let's be, okay, so let's be solution-focused and figure out, so then how should we do it, not, right?
I think we as a board should look at your recommendations, we should dissect it, we should, we should come up with something as a board that we propose, and we should approve it. You know, I mean, I understand you want the, the, the public's, you know, uh, input on this, but I'm telling you, as a member of this public, there is nobody that I know that is going to think that this makes any sense at all. I mean, the, the rate increase from 3.50 to 5, if you're a family, a mom and dad and three kids, you, you just priced them out of swimming here. At the same time, we just cut a deal with the Navy, how much does the MWR pay for a, a Navy kid to swim here? They pay $1.50, don't they, $2.50, right?
No, it's gonna, they're gonna, no, that, that is what the current rate is.
Is that going to go up for the Navy as well?
Yes, it is. It's gonna go up to...
So what's it going to be?
It's gonna be the 10 punch card pass, so they'll pay 10% of a 10 punch pass. And they've been told that, that that's, we're working at, we're gonna...
Several times.
Yes, they know that.
Okay. I just think up to $5 is quite a jump.
I do have a question, is this gonna be a per session like it is now? Or is that they come in and they stay as long as they want? Because that would make a difference.
It is, it's, it's, and we have to talk about, as we get into aerobics, because aerobics, you know, the going from row aerobics to another, that's kind of a thing that...
Well, and even going from aerobics to lap swims, or the way it is now, it would be lap swim or aerobics, open swim, you could be charging someone almost, yeah, almost $20, depending on what they did.
And, and there is a multiple session rate here, if you look, it is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 down, and, and a noon afternoon, just, and, and that was intended to, that was intended to address that.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, so they can go to like multiple aerobics, and that's, so that was intended, because aerobics needs to be paid for.
Okay, so we are going to socialize this amongst the board, um, recognizing that even if we do not post it, well, rather, we're, sorry, there, we, we haven't decided anything yet. However, um, sorry, I, I, um, but we, the suggestion, you have a suggestion, and since we skipped over some other things, we can, we can have a motion about how to do that, but let's wait till we get to the end of all of this.
Okay. It's just, when I look at it, I'm seeing over a 40% increase in this swimming. For, for a person that walks through that door, that's a 40% increase. And I have to agree with what Ms. Bott said, at a time when the, when the public's looking at us, wondering where the value is, and we're going to increase 40% just to walk through the door and swim.
And, and I wouldn't necessarily, I, I don't agree that, that people wonder where the value is, that, that that's the prevailing belief here. I, I don't, I don't believe that.
I personally think the only way you could, you could feel that way is if you're not listening to people.
Well, I, I'm sorry that you think that I'm not listening to people, but I, I, I feel like what we're trying to do is we're trying to socialize something here, and it needs to be discussed by the board.
I am discussing it, and I am a board member.
I, I understand that, but what we're trying to do is get to what the right answer is. And, and we need to do it in an organized fashion.
I'm asking for this not to be posted in this building until the board has a chance to look at it in August.
It's public, right?
And it, and it has to be public.
And it's public.
It is, it has to be public.
It doesn't have to be in their face as soon as they walk through the door.
Right, but, right, exactly, but, I mean, that's...
There's one question I got, and I'm sorry, as far as, if you hadn't explained it in the first place, I would have had no idea what you were talking about. Because you're, you're saying in and out of district.
Yes.
Well, right here is $5, there is nothing that says 5/6.
Because, and you know why? Because the people, the cashier told me, it's too hard when a person comes in for one visit to do an in and out of district, although other, other places have told me that's not an issue. But Anna Cordis, um, Anna Cordis does that, they don't need it for a single visit, but anyway, that's why.
Well, and then in that case, what you said about 10 visits for somebody out of district, out of district is wrong, it's not $60, it pays $50.
No, 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 they are gonna pay $60 for the multiple, I meant, 10 punch pass out.
It's $47.
Forty, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. So, you are very correct, that's, that's a good...
And the thing is, is in and out, what does in and out mean?
In and out, in or out of the district.
I understand that, but you missed about posting this.
Oh, you're right, it's not...
What does in and out mean?
Okay, then you're right, we can't, you're right, we can't post it.
It needs to be, if it's posted, it has to be specific what we're talking about.
Okay.
That's my only comment with that.
And that's a great comment, thank you. You're right.
All right, so, so in relation to this, is there, is there a motion related to the fee schedule proposal?
I make a motion that we don't post it this time until, until stuff is reviewed and we're double-closer and spelled out better, as far as, like I was suggesting I was making, as far as what is in and out, what does it mean? You know, in district, out of district, you know, until them are clarified, so you know exactly what you're reading.
All right, so there's a motion for more clarification?
Correct.
You said until we discuss it, or just until it's more...
Well, we would have to, we would have to vote on it again, until August meeting.
Okay, so...
So after the board as a whole has voted on it?
Correct.
Okay, discussed it at the August... So, the, if, tell me if I get this correct, so there's a motion to update the proposal with more information to explain it, to better explain it, and that we discuss it at the August regular meeting, as a board?
Correct.
Prior to any additional action?
Yes.
All right.
Clarified.
Is there a second? Second. All right, is there any discussion on the motion to further clarify and to discuss in August? All right, if there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we'll just back up for a moment then, is there a motion as it relates to the facility maintenance list?
Oh, right, right, right. I knew that we formalized the list, the facility maintenance list, and adopt it as an ongoing working document.
Is there a second?
Could I see the list, I can't see it?
No. I can grab a copy of it. I wonder, did we talk about it in March? When did we talk about it? Is this one? I'm not sure. I don't have it here. I don't know that we ever got it as part of the package. Of course, I have a Zine copies, but they're in the stuff that I left at home. January. February. Oh, it was at the special meeting, the budget meeting, which I don't have minutes for that in here. I will forward it to you.
Yeah, this time I will abstain from voting on it, because, because I haven't seen it.
Well, it hasn't been sent in yet either, so...
Yeah, so, if we, if it, if there's no second, then the motion will die. All right, facilities maintenance list, motion dies. All right, so moving along, uh, again, program review, employee discount policy. Current, the current policy eligibility is 90 days of employment. Um, my understanding is that that isn't currently enforced, although that's our state of policy, and a work minimum of four hours per month. Um, the employee discounts received are 10% off retail, except concessions, 30, 30% off swim lessons, party rentals, club monthly fees and program fees, and family, family members living in the same household swim for free with employee.
He got an open, you just have to push up when you're in March.
Oh. All right, so our recommendation rationale is that we absolutely support having employee perks wherever possible. However, um, we don't feel it's right for these perks to extend to programs with a deficit balance or products with little or no margins, which effectively costs the taxpayers, or is consumed, it doesn't cost the taxpayers money, but it spends the taxpayers money. And, and so, our recommendations are trying to keep in support with, with both of those bullets. Um, the recommended policy is that the eligibility remains 90 days of employment, but that it's enforced, um, and that the, um, employee work a minimum of 32 hours per month, so effectively, one day, a minimum of one day a week, on average. Um, and that the employee discounts received should be, based on my understanding, and it, but that, that we have very low to no markup on our retail items, that employees receive no discount on retail, um, that, and I, I realize this one might seem a little difficult to administer, but I'd at least like to socialize it. Um, swim lesson discount should apply only to group lessons and only when break-even point of attendance has, has been passed. Um, but after that, that the 30% discount applies. So what that would mean with better explanation is my understanding, and we can certainly do a better math exercise on this, but is that if we have two kids in a class that we've met, that we, that the class is paid for itself. Um, and in that instance, that we would be able to, um, apply an employee discount. Um, so hopefully it's not that difficult, but, um, anyway. But, but the idea being that the class is already paid for. Um, and, um, let's see, that we defer the party rental discount discussion for the party rental program review, that that's something that is maybe a little more complicated? Um, you know, well...
Maybe?
If we look at the financials, I think, is where we're, so we, we want to put that off, is I think what we're saying, is that we don't want to make a decision until we look at the financials for the party rentals. Um, and that we eliminate club and program discounts for employees. So for example, NWA, the running club, kayaking, et cetera. Um, the rationale behind that is that these are programs that are consuming taxpayer monies, um, and that we need every bit of contribution we can get. Um, and that we continue with the family members living in the same household, swim for free with employee. Is there a motion on the recommended employee discount policy?
I recommend that we, um, set as policy what was recommended by the committee on this sheet.
All right, so, is there a second?
I will second this.
Okay, there's, it's a movement, seconded, is there, is there any discussion?
I would like to discuss a few things, if I could, please.
Sure.
This, this has actually been talked about before, I was talking about Blood two years ago, to great length. And some of the things that will become a nightmare, I think, are going to be, you know, the 32 hours a month. It sets the stage for a person works, what if they work 31 hours? What if, what if they work 31 this month, 32 next month, and you've got this back and forth, back and forth? What if you have a supervisor that decides, you know what? That person there, I'm not gonna let them work 32 hours. The way it's always been, I think, is if they, if they're basically are on the books, four hours, you know, basically that one time a month. You know, maybe, instead of looking at a 30% discount, maybe what we should be looking at would be, you know, a, a 10% discount, and it's for everyone. Any employee of the Northwoodby Park and Rec District. I mean, I understand that, you know, uh, we want to help our employees. But when I look at this, you know, a lot of these young kids, individuals who are teaching swim lessons, they may actually not be about that 32 hours. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
And these are, these are young people mostly, that really could use that little extra... And these are young people mostly, that really could use that little extra incentive, you know. It's a nice perk. And, you know, I don't know why we, we probably don't have to be locked into the thirty percent. My thought was that when we look at the employee, the employee is the one we've invested in. Maybe the employee gets a twenty percent discount, and maybe their family, because that's the way we've always done it before. If you have a child that's in swim lessons, you know, instead of giving the thirty percent discount, maybe the child gets a ten percent discount, because we're investing in the employee and their health. And I don't know why we would limit it to certain programs, because swim instruction also is a program. You know, if I have an employee working for me, and he or she wants to take kayaking, that discount should apply to kayaking. And yet, it's listed here as one of the clubs that we wouldn't extend that discount to. I don't know why we would extend it to swim school and none of the other programs. And when you start getting into revenue neutral, what's revenue neutral this month? It may not be next month. So I get the discount this month, but I don't next month. So when they pay it, do they pay it upfront, and then we reimburse them if it is revenue neutral, or do we?
I think you're, I think you might be taking this a step further in terms of that. It's not looked at as to whether it's revenue neutral on a monthly basis.
Didn't you say a break-even point?
Well, that's for swim lessons alone, and so it's when you're signing up for a class. Again, if you do the math, my understanding is, and if I'm wrong on this, I'm, you know, we can figure it out, but it's, as long as there are two other children, then the discount should apply. That, or two other, excuse me, two other participants, sorry.
So what happens if there's one person registered, and you register your child, and then four more people register? They will now pay the full price, but they should have gone with the discount. So that's what Steve's asking, how do you compensate for that?
I think what we're doing is we're setting up a logistical nightmare. I honestly think that every person who works here that's on the books is an employee, they get a discount. You know, whatever we deem that to be. And any program they want to take part in, instead of the thirty percent, it's a ten percent discount for their child or for a family member, and it's twenty percent for them, you know. And this part about, you know, employees swim, and they get to bring their kids or their family that live in, maybe what we ought to look at doing is going to a punch pass. You work here, at the end of every month, you get an eight-card punch pass. You can use it on your kids, you can use it on your boyfriend's kids, you can use it on your best friend. You've got a lot of these kids, they don't have kids of their own, but maybe they have a best friend that they could bring. You know, it doesn't fall under the family, but if we give them a punch pass instead, it would work.
Well, let me, I was under the impression, for swim lessons, people are at the same level in each. So you sign up for a swim group lesson, and isn't everybody, you start, you do the next eight lessons together, or somehow are people?
Yes, but no, but what I'm saying is, she's saying you have to have two people enrolled in the class. Well, we wrote open registration on Friday, so if, you know, Erica decides to register her child, and she's the second person to register her child for that session, based on her standard, she does not qualify for the employee discount. But then if four more people register their kids after that, she does.
How often is that gonna happen?
You know what, people register the first day because class is filled up.
I'm just saying, and how many of those people are gonna be employees that we're gonna have to?
What if we? We have, I think we have four, five?
Five, six.
Six now, even, that have their kids in group lessons.
So you're making an argument that let's just not have swim lesson discounts at all either?
It would be a little bit difficult to track. We could do a system where we gave them a credit back to their account once the class qualified. I think what Steve's saying, where maybe they got a smaller discount across the board, might be easier, less cumbersome on the accounting side of it, but that's kind of your call.
See, the thing that I got, that you just sat there and said not long ago that staff sat there and said it'd be too difficult for every day of somebody that's coming to charge six dollars by five dollars, but yet, you're sitting there doing something that's much more complicated, in my opinion, and saying that we're gonna do this.
How many people?
I think it should be, you know, ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever, flat rate for everything, for every employee. If you work here, that's it.
I think, while I think there is some merit to that for certain programs, I will reiterate again that I think for certain programs that we know are losing over ten thousand dollars, for example, this year, I don't feel that it's fair to absorb taxpayer money by giving a discount.
We need to look at closing the programs, in my opinion.
And that's a, part of the program review is to try to look at, not necessarily closing the programs, but to try to look at where we need to make changes, so that they, we're trying to, so that we as a board can make decisions about them.
I understand.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying, that certainly is what we're trying to do. So while I understand, I'm not opposed to it, and if it's easier, again, we're trying to socialize recommendations. The whole idea is to bring them to the board and to see what folks think. Is there, do you have any more discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, so it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the employee discount policy as proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so the motion fails. Oh, wait, do I need a, all right, so because of that, sorry, I'm not really experienced with this. Let's take a count, Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Nay.
All right, the motion fails, two to one, or one to two, depending on how you say that.
Cecil, are you an I E or?
I E. Yeah, I have problems spelling at times, too.
The demand almost varies.
It's different.
All right, so moving on, okay, so the kayaks. We, as I understand it, we now have three kayaks, well, we have three to four. Well, we should have, we have three kayaks left in our possession, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and so I think we need to talk about what to do about them, and if anyone has a motion, please feel free to throw it out there.
How much is it gonna cost us to advertise it? There's one last thing.
It would be a little less than what the last go-around was, because of the amount of space that's used. I think that we could actually shorten the ad a little bit after speaking with, looking at some of the other ads that are selling surplus property, finding what they're doing is a little bit shorter than what we put out. I think that we would be able to shorten it, but it's still gonna cost us at least two to three hundred dollars to put that ad in the paper again.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Would you be amenable, you had some, you had some good ideas about this last month. And I just wonder, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering if you would be amenable to being the kayaks committee? But to go research some alternatives and come back to us at the regular meeting with a, here's some alternatives, but here's what I think we should do?
I could do that.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, yeah, because I'll tell you, it works really strange, is when you really look at some of this stuff, you know, there are places where we'll throw stuff away, because then, and it's cheaper. And, you know, that's what I'm afraid of, if we advertise it for three hundred dollars, it doesn't sell. We advertise it again, and now you're already past the five hundred dollars.
Right, and we just, we just.
Yeah, I would love to do that, thank you.
Yeah, we just made ten fifty, and we spent almost eight hundred dollars.
Thank you.
To make that one thousand and fifty dollars.
Thank you very much.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Thank you, Steve, for being willing to do that.
All right, pool temperature review.
Insurance update?
Oh, am I looking, I'm looking at the old one, sorry, I have too many papers, I apologize.
Oh, did we, insurance update?
Yeah, I know.
Sorry. Is that what she said? Okay, sorry.
That's okay, it got me on the right page. All right, so insurance update.
Insurance update, I've been working with insurance broker Jeff Olson from La Bucchi. We have had five declinations so far on people that wanted to quote. Past history played into it some, the majority of what played into these was the high executive director turnover and a high board turnover that made insurance companies uncomfortable. So we want to make sure that that is something that we address as we move forward. Jeff is looking at two to three possible quotes. Actually, he called me this morning and said he does have one firm quote in, and he is waiting on a second, possibly a third, and then he's going to have fun playing them all against each other. He and I are meeting on August eleventh, we are unsure exactly what time, and we are going to go over the different quotes, and then he is asking that, possibly that following week, the seventeenth, eighteenth, that we call a special meeting in there at some point. And he would like then, at that point, he and I will have quotes for you to vote on, and then he will go forward with getting the insurance company, which we decide to go with to sign. He has one question, and it would be for the board to decide. As of now, and it makes a difference of about five thousand dollars in our insurance quote, whether we would add flood insurance, we have it now, do we want to keep it? That was his one question, that's something for you guys to think about. You can let us know as we are going forward with getting the quotes from the insurance company. And then again, he said, a meeting on the seventeenth or the eighteenth of August for us to choose. He and I, again, will meet on the eleventh of August.
He said we have it now?
We have flood insurance? We do have it now, yes, and.
Can I, I'm gonna ask a probably stupid question about that. So it's in terms of a natural disaster flood?
It's not like a flood of our pipes, right?
Right, right, no, I'm just.
That's different. We have that one as well.
Yeah, we need it. Now, river's rising.
The fault line cracks and.
Then we're all.
And gonna say, it doesn't really matter until that point.
Okay, well, so when do you need to, when do you need to know that by? The flood insurance, when do you need a definitive on that?
By August eleventh.
Okay, so is there a motion regarding that?
I make a motion we decline flood insurance.
All right, there's a motion on table.
A second.
Moving seconded, discussion.
Why would we have had flood insurance, Cecil, what do you think?
That's what I was thinking. I don't even have it on my house, because we're not in a flood zone.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea that we don't have it, in all honesty.
And, I mean, look at our floors and stuff like that, yeah, we'll have to replace a lot of stuff, but the pool's gonna be fine. The floors will be fine if we get flooded out with salt water, just clean it.
If we get flooded with salt water, we have more problems than.
Exactly, we have a different set of problems.
This is, this is, this is not like pipes break, right? This is actual flood.
This is a natural disaster flood.
What he said was, natural disaster flood insurance, if we have a flood. And one of the first questions he asked was, do you guys have a creek or a river nearby?
No, you don't.
So is that a separate policy, or it's part, it's rolled into the larger policy?
The flood insurance is in addition on to the policy.
Okay.
Okay.
And he had asked me two questions, was earthquake, and I knew the answer to that one, absolutely.
Yes.
And flood, was earthquake and flood is what he had asked.
Okay.
What was the price of this?
Four to five thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry, you did say that.
So, you know, huge.
All right, so is there any more discussion? All right, call the vote, all those in favor of declining flood insurance on our next policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And I have a note, and we can kind of cover this at the end, but perhaps then a special meeting, we can figure out the date, and/or have, you know, if Sean's back, have that. But that, perhaps, we could have that for insurance, as well as a director search update.
Yeah, and he asked for the seventeenth or the eighteenth of August for that meeting.
And those, thank you, I knew someone had.
Yeah, because our regular meeting is the twentieth, so there, it's Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
Cool.
Is either day better for anybody? I realize I'm.
They're both the same for me.
For me, they're both the same.
Okay, so if we could tentatively, can we tentatively say the seventeen?
That's good.
The Monday, that way, if we have to push it off, we still have another day.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Seven P M?
Correct. Yeah, and so, and perhaps we'll find other reasons, but if we can put insurance, insurance and then a director search update, that would be great. Is that fair? Yep, okay, since you had.
And he said bring your questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Bring your questions.
We will have documentation prior to that, though, that we can review, so that we will actually.
He is going to be bringing me something on the eleventh.
Okay.
When he brings it to me, then I will make sure that you guys get a copy of it.
Yeah, that is the only way to bring questions, at least for me. All right, so moving on, pool temperature review. So where have we been residing, how have we been in terms of comments?
We have, we replaced some sensors, Matt did, replaced some sensors, and we have been knocked on a big old slab of wood holding beautifully steady. We have had straight across the board eighty-two in the main pool. We have fluctuated a little bit between eighty-five and eighty-six in the wading pool, sometimes a little bit higher. And we are fingers crossing that those sensors seem to be doing a great job about keeping us steady. Our complaints about water temperature have gone down significantly.
How about the wonderful lady that was here before, is she still coming?
She is.
Has she noticed a difference?
She has.
Has she commented on that difference positively?
Yeah, she says, she says it's a lot better, thank you. She says it's not doing the role it used to anymore.
Have we ever followed through with putting brochures out to where people could buy rash guards? And maybe the half-mill little wet suits that they can buy, the shorties?
I know, Michelle Reedy, before she left, she had put out some things for the aerobics ladies to look at as far as rash guards and warm shirts go, and had shared some information with them. I haven't had any comment back from them, and we don't have anything currently up at the front desk, but I do know that she did have that conversation with those that were in her aerobics classes.
I just wondered if there's any way we could put something like that, like pictures? Because even some of the little younger kids that are four and skinny or freezing to death, to where there's, you know, maybe a picture of a kid in one, to where they go, yeah, I want one of those. If we could do maybe something like that, thanks. Because I think what it could do is it could call somebody and say, well, what's that for? Well, you know, it kind of helps keep you warm when you're in the pool.
I have the conversation with some swim lessons parents sometimes.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have them here by chance, or is it?
We do not. They are something that you have to order, and they are not cheap. So it would not be something that I would want to keep in inventory simply because of the cost.
We could possibly take orders for them, so that we could order in four patrons, pre-made, of course, like with our gobblements and capers. Yeah, that's a possibility as well, but again, it wouldn't be something I'd want to keep in inventory.
I'm not sure that we would want, just because it's so periodic, we may not want to get into that business. We may want to be able to refer them to somebody, just meaning, because then you're holding their money for two months, three months, four months.
You could provide them with two or three websites or something like that.
Are they available at Big Five?
They do, they have some.
We've told them that Big Five has them, we've also given them the name of a couple of websites that they can go to to get them as well.
Perfect.
We've done some research on costs.
The console's been replaced that we paid for, right? It's keeping that temperature where it's at?
It has not. The reason that it has not is because the people that manufacture the console, they are needing to schedule with us when they can come out. Matt and I have discussed when they can come out. Matt has been working with them, he has been calling them several times a week, trying to get them to pin down a timeframe when they will be able to come out. They have not been able, they've been giving him the runaround, and so I asked him that, that he needed to stick me on them, that I'd be more than happy to get a little bit rougher with them. However, he's going to have another conversation with them, either, I don't know, we had it today, but he said by this week, and he would try and.
Do they have our money?
Two-week timeframe, they don't have our money, because I told them I would rather not, I would rather not give them money, until I have them on the schedule.
So he's been able to maintain it with just sensors, then?
With sensors, but, you know, it's Matt coming in, having to make adjustments to those sensors. And he says it's very.
Delicate.
Very delicate, very, very delicate. He's been doing a great job at keeping up on top of those.
So I think, at this point, we'll just continue to monitor this, keep this as an open issue.
Yes, thank you.
Moving forward.
And as soon as we get a date pinned down, when we can get these people to come out, I will notify the board as well.
That'd be great. Silver sneakers.
Silver sneakers, I'm going to turn this over to Julie, because I have signed the contracts, and I have done everything we needed to do, and it is now on her side.
So we're working on getting cashiers up to speed on it. Training's a little bit tricky, because it involves hippos stuff and finding time to train each of the cashiers. Also, one thing that we have to be sure we have in place. Also, one thing that we have to be sure we have in place before we can start enrolling people, the contract does require us to have 100% secure storage for all of the files associated with it. Right now, our walking filing cabinets are kind of at a premium, so we have to have something to be able to store those.
They're at a premium because they have other sensitive information?
They have other sensitive information.
As opposed to they're just, that's fine.
We have one walking filing cabinet, and it has our employee files. I'm looking at probably the beginning of September, before we do the enrollment thing, just with the number of new cashiers we're training, and getting them, like, regular training, plus getting them through this training. And that'll let people kind of get back from their summer travel a little bit.
We'd like to hold a membership drive when we do it. We want to, we've told our, we had a meeting with, I don't know, was it 15, 12 to 15 of our aerobics ladies just the other day, that Julie and I sat down and just had a, we spent about an hour, hour and a half with them, just going over things and talking to them. And we told them we're gonna throw a party when we have this. We'll get some cookies and some coffee, and we're gonna throw a membership party, and just start getting people signed up once we have this on board, and they're very excited about that.
Now, have we figured out the logistics of, so part of our requirement is that they have facilities available between this hour and this hour? Have we figured out the logistics of that yet? I don't know if I should be looking at you, but I am, because you were talking.
I think we pretty much have. And actually, coming up in our proposed schedule, you'll see where we're going to have more facility hours available. And one thing we talked about is mats and stretch pants and whatnot that they can use actually in this room at any time we're open. So that will fulfill that part.
It would be great if, when we're ready to do that, that we have a specific silver sneaker schedule that would just let them know, like, if it's, and I apologize that I don't remember the exact verbiage, but, you know, 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, or whatever the timing is, that during this time, these are the activities that you can do.
That's definitely on the books as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, we do have our promotional literature from them here, ready to go out to people, and when we're a little closer to...
I'm so excited.
How are we gonna advertise that?
Well, we have those brochures. We'll get it up on our Facebook, up on our website. I think Erica and I will be contacting the nursing homes, because they can bring their people here with their little buses.
Retirement.
Just to set up a store, retirement charities.
Wherever we can get it, that doesn't cost us a lot of money.
There's also, I'm trying to remember the name of the paper room. It's the Island, no, it's the Island.
The free one, the...
The free one, yes.
Withy Local.
Island Local, something like that.
Withy Local, yeah.
But you can get that information, once it kicks off, you know, have somebody sit there who knows how to write. Write up the article, take some pictures and stuff like that, and you can submit that to...
To them as well.
To them, and they will sit there and publicize it.
Oh, but they might be happy to...
I'm in touch with them.
I would.
Yes.
But I mean, there's more papers than just one, is all I'm saying.
Yep, absolutely.
And we go through the Chamber of Commerce as well, so we get everybody involved. We're really excited to get it going, actually.
Me too.
I actually talked to the director over in Anna Horace, and got some do's and don'ts.
Good, right on.
Are we just, I'm sorry, but are we, in this room, are we just gonna put mats and bands? Are we gonna have any hand weights? Are we gonna have anything that shows stretching exercises that you can do?
All of that.
Right up there would be something to put on.
We, yeah, there's some posters that go along with that as well, and some exercise balls, there's bands, there's some mats, there's some hand weights, there's medicine balls, we've got all sorts of stuff. And it's stuff that we already have on, on site.
Great.
So you said some of the people at the pool, they've been talking to you about it? Really excited?
They are very excited, and they're just, in fact, I had one lady tell me just this afternoon, she says, "Please let me know, because I've got five or six friends that I'm gonna drag..."
Thank you.
"...by the hair if I have them."
Thank you, awesome.
It would be great if we could add this to program reports. Just, it's something that's not gonna go away, and I think we always want to know how it's doing.
We have to track it very carefully for silver sneakers.
This is just one of those feel-good moments.
It is, no, it's wonderful.
Of our monthly reports, we'll be able to give you guys a good tracking number.
Yeah, I can add it to my admin corner.
Alright, and so, on a slightly less positive note. Now, obviously, the, okay, okay, good.
I guess so too.
Alpha imaging, no, okay, so we're...
Hey, I checked with Island County this afternoon, and as of today, they have the cashing check.
They have not?
Have not.
And we paid it.
But we did receive, before I sent the check, before I even sent the request to county to pay them, I made sure that they sent me an updated invoice, and a email saying that our account will...
Good, good job, thank you, thank you. Is there, sorry, just, I know I asked about this before. Is there any secondary market for this stuff? Maybe there's not.
We'd have to go through the same process.
Okay, yeah, no, moving on.
What was alpha imaging?
It's the toner cartridges that were ordered incorrectly last year, prior to Joanne being in the position, and we, they were not, they were incorrect toner cartridges that were delivered, they were never really, I think, inventoried or even looked at. And by the time, and by the time we saw them and understood that they didn't fit with any of our equipment, they were non-returnable.
And do we have something in process to stop this from happening, right?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Yes, and Joanne has handled it really wonderfully.
She's done a great job with them.
Fixing, helping, yeah, clean it up. Alright, so moving on, okay, telecom issue update, I know we kind of started that one.
Julie has the log for us.
I, I'm on the table there somewhere.
Okay, we got it in this...
So this was in regard to repeated internet failures that occur the same time every evening. Every evening, and it's virtually without fail. And when I have contacted Frontier multiple times, in fact, I think all of the three of us I know have all contacted Frontier at one point or another throughout this process, asking them, and they have given us every excuse from "It's a bad cable" to "It's, we don't understand what's going on, let me check the books, my records don't match yours," that sort of thing. So they asked for, they asked us if they could send another tech out. I said, "Absolutely, though I do expect to see a bill for it." So that you guys have been, we've been monkeying around with this long enough, please send as many techs as you want. I haven't seen the tech yet.
Have we escalated this with Frontier?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so who are we in communication with at Frontier?
We are, James was the last guy I spoke to, I don't have his last name.
Okay, James is the technical supervisor for the area, unfortunately, I know these things. James actually works for a woman whose information I have, and I can find it somewhere at home. But I think we need to continue to escalate this until the problem is fixed, because I know, as I understood it from a discussion, I think it was after the last meeting, that people are going through lots of manual gyrations to reconcile things, and we just can't, we can't do that.
Completely disrupting business.
Right.
It is. We've put a plan in place to make sure that things are still deemed and accurately, but it would be very nice if we could actually conduct business the way business is meant to be conducted.
May I ask you a question?
Of course.
How long have we been with Frontier? Only about a year and a half, is it?
I think a little longer than that, actually.
Wasn't it after Mr. Director, former Director Wolf? Didn't it happen on his part?
No.
Is it under...
It's been Frontier the whole time I've been here.
Okay.
It's been, it's been at least two years.
Okay.
And we have had problems pretty much from day one. Unfortunately, every conversation that we have had with other internet providers have ranged anywhere from "We can't do that" to "Well, we'd be more than happy to for $26,000." So, of course, that's not an option for us to do. I did have a conversation recently with Comcast, and one of the things that I asked them at that point is, I said, "Since our senior center next door has it, our fire department out our back door has it, what would it take for us, since we're sitting right smack dab in between the two, to get it as well?" "Oh, we weren't aware that you were that close to somebody." So they would like to send out somebody in August, they said the second week of August, to come and evaluate.
Thank you, that's good.
I think it's good, but I think we also need to be cautious of the fact that if we haven't really diagnosed the problem, there is, you know, you can have, you can have a bad knee, and you can switch doctors, and you can still have a bad knee. So while it may actually have something to do with internet connectivity, it might not be Frontier in its entirety. So I just want to just be sure that we're cautiously diagnosing this. So I think, I personally think that escalating it through Frontier to help us get the problem fixed is still a good course of action, even if we decide down the road that, and it's gonna take a while if we decide to go with...
With another funding.
Yeah, that we're still trying to fix it.
We'll keep that area out of...
Also, one question I got, the Frontier, do we sit there and have their contract that they would cover the lines internally, even like to do with Comcast? I mean, whatever phone companies and stuff? Where you can sit there and get it, whether you will cover the lines inside the building, or is it just up to us?
Who would have a copy of the contract? It's a great question, sorry, that's...
I believe we do. I can imagine that.
Okay.
We're not gonna get that, but just if we do.
No, but I think, yeah.
Yeah, just as we looked over at, you know, this is covered.
I'll look at it, email it to you. However, it was a conversation that I did have with the tech when I asked, you know, if it is indeed a wiring or a cable issue, would not then we see problems sporadically throughout the day, instead of every single time at a certain 8:15 to 8:30 at night? It is exactly the same time every night. If it were a wiring issue, I would expect that we would have...
It's groundhog day.
Absolutely.
It is, it is groundhog day.
For their poor cashiers, more than... Yeah.
And they didn't really have an answer for me with that one, other than high internet usage in the area.
It shouldn't cause an outage.
I know at one point, they also suggested that it might be the outlet that a router's plugged into back there, and something else clicking on, making it trip. But nothing else is plugged into that outlet, and I don't...
And Matt went over that several times.
Yeah, and I don't see...
It's...
But if it tripped the outlet, I mean, it would still be off the next day, where you would have to...
Exactly, exactly, and we don't do anything with it. We come in in the morning, and it's working again.
So you're gonna look up the contract, though, if you could just forward us the information? I mean, just so that we have a better understanding. And you obviously would have one too, but that way we can know kind of what's covered, because that's a great question. Alright, thank you, alright. So I wasn't, in the longest agenda item ever, entitled, I wasn't really sure what to call it, but it was, sorry, I didn't know what to call it. So last meeting, we talked about the possibility of during Enmark and Masters practices, opening the sauna, the hot tub, and the waiting pool.
Coach said, "Please, please, 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 I'm sick and tired of kicking my kids out of there." So if you would love to, he says he would love to have the public there. He says it would be a great way to not only advertise his program, he said, "We would only need to put one guard on," because he would act as their backup, so someone would save us money and payroll. And he said that he would be more than happy to have the people.
Alright.
He said, "Go for it."
So when would we look at making this change effective?
If we, when we get to the scheduling, I think that that would be a great time to do it, is when we start our fall, winter, and spring scheduling. You'll see that we've already added it in. When you look at the schedules that we gave you, we can start it early. It's something we can advertise, it's no problem. But Coach was all for it.
Great.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So you're gonna have a lifeguard. They're going to monitor the waiting pool.
The waiting pool, the hot tub, and the sauna.
Okay. Because the only, I mean, I had two concerns originally. With the waiting pool, it was a safety thing, little kids, chaos. And not the numbers now, but if it grows like it was before, it was just utter chaos, right? Organized chaos, but still, nonetheless, chaos, I mean, from out here looking in. And I would hate to see a little kid get ran over, and...
This coach has pretty good control of...
Well, good. Because if you would remember how it was before, you would just have to close your eyes. And the only concern I had about the hot tub, and if you're telling me there would be an adult to monitor that, would be the possi, and, no, but there's no good way to say it. The possibility of pedophiles. You know, somebody sitting in that hot tub, watching young kids, and just the uncomfortability, because there was a time when that actually happened, and they had to ask someone to leave because the way the guy was behaving around some of the young girls walking by in their bathing suits. And I would just want to watch that closely. And I think you could understand why.
But that would probably be the same as open swim, right?
Well...
Yeah, similar.
I mean, it should be.
Well, here's the difference, is that you have all these kids, and you have one coach. You know, and you didn't have any lifeguards in here before. And so, I mean, there was no way a coach could watch any of that happening, was the point. You see what I'm saying, don't you, with that? I mean, because if there's no lifeguards in here, because you don't have to have a lifeguard for the hot tub, right?
Actually, you do.
Really? Okay, I thought that you had told us that you didn't have to.
Someone could have a heart attack.
Okay, well, that's good.
Hot tub and sauna both need to have somebody that's gonna be responsible for them, yeah, as well, obviously, as the waiting pool. So we would need to put the lifeguard on, who would work together.
I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up.
And that's a very, very good point, and that's what I think, you know, we would have two staff members who would be on deck at that point, who would be willing to, and be able to look to make sure that our kids are safe.
Yeah, and that, I mean, and that's correct.
And 99% of the time, there's at least one other member of management.
And if that lifeguard could ensure me that, or us, that some of the running that used to happen with Coach Neil here, which I never seen anybody get hurt, but running from one end to the other, and that's why I'm saying, somebody running a little kid, collision, kid gets hurt.
This is a much different dynamic. I'm seeing a lot more of the appropriate behavior from our swim team that we have not seen in the past.
You understand why I bring that up, okay.
Well, running on deck should be a safety issue.
Well, you would think so.
Every pool I've ever been to, you know...
I do think so.
I understand, but...
You're allowed to run on the deck.
Not running, but walking extremely fast.
The thing to remember is, I don't care what rules you have, it's not being enforced by the people here. Rules don't...
And that's what I'm saying, the only way I could support that would be if the kids are safe over here, and kids are safe from, you know...
Just this coach encourages safe behavior on deck.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we, at this point, will just take that as part of the fall schedule.
We could also start fairly, I mean, he was all for it. He was like, "Yes, yes, do it, do it, do it."
Do you think if we advertised it, you know, in the place where you say, "Hey, we got time for extra lap swim or open swim," if we just put it online and said, "Hey, we're opening up," will that get enough, I would think the little, you know, the little lap, the little kids will get enough that it would pay for the extra lifeguard.
It quite possibly would. I don't have the lifeguard scheduled through right now, so maybe it would be a scheduling issue for me. If I can easily solve that scheduling issue, then we can totally do that. Yes.
Do you, you know the baby and me classes that happen over here? Do you, you know the baby and me classes that happen over here? Since he's willing to do that, would it be possible to, I mean, I understand you're wanting to open up the waiting pool. I don't know how many little kids are gonna be in there unless it's a brother or sister over here. But could you do any of the baby and me classes during that?
It would, I mean, it's definitely a possibility, anything is a possibility. However, we find that once we open it up, that once the time gets known to the public, then we see pretty high usage over there, which would then interfere with classes. If we find that that's a lower usage time, then it would definitely be an option to put a mommy and me class in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so is there, is there a motion for a schedule change for the, I'm not trying to push anything, I'm just asking a question. Is there a motion for a schedule change to the current schedule? Are we gonna leave it for the, or none and we leave it for the fall schedule? Those are the.
When does the fall schedule start?
September 6th. 6th, 6th.
Basically a month.
And you guys have got our proposed fall winters, springs agenda, so it's on the agenda to discuss.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure everybody's good, alright. Again, I'm trying to, alright, do, just, I'm just gonna take a small process check. Do people need a couple of minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, good idea. Alright, so let's see, the time now is 8:50 and we will reconvene at 8:55?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Alright, so we are reconvening, we are reconvening the meeting at, there's a glare, but it looks like it is.
8:57.
8:57 PM. And so moving on to new business, facility health standards. Did you wanna give us an update?
Sure.
Okay.
I can give you an update on facility health standards. We have adjusted our chemical, chemical procedures, I guess we could call them. We are keeping our chemicals in the pool. We're shooting for a three parts per million. We have reviewed with, we have reviewed both current and past readings with the Department of Health, the Health Department. And we are.
The County Health Department?
County Health Department, yeah, Island County Health Department. And we are in compliance, we have sailed through all of our past inspections. They did not feel that we were, we had anything to be concerned about at this point. They gave us some recommendations on where to keep our chemicals as we're continuing to move forward. And we have addressed those working together with them. We have also addressed chemical reading procedures with our staff. We have done some retraining. And the chemical readings are going to be reviewed more frequently by Facilities Director Matt and myself as we continue to monitor and train the lifeguards and make sure that they are taking their readings appropriately. Matt and I are also taking readings ourselves a couple of times a day to make sure that what we're getting is matching what our staff is getting as well. There any more questions?
I just wanted to say, I did, just out of curiosity, I asked one of the lifeguards after their retraining, did you feel like you know what you're doing? And the answer was, yeah, I feel a lot better now. But that, you know, I feel like it's a more extensive process, or at least as that person understood it and felt really good about how to take the readings, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, sure.
I have some concern and we talked about it a little bit, on where that, where that target is, or when it gets to a certain point, what do we do? I mean, and like we discussed, I know there's a lot of talk about the Health Department, but the WAC is very precise on what the minimum is. So regardless of what the Health Department says, we are sworn to uphold the laws of the state of Washington. And the minimum for a pool is 1.5 parts per million for chlorine, 2.5 for the brom- before, actually, four parts per million for bromine in the, in the hot tub and three parts per million for the chlorine in the waiting pool. That's the minimum, cannot go below that. Goes below that, we have to pull people out of the pool. That's the law. We can't, we cannot, I mean, regardless of what the Health Department says, we have to follow the law, correct?
Correct.
So where is that target going to be that we say, we gotta get Matt or whoever in here to get that fixed?
With, with the target for the main pool especially is if we hit a two, two parts per million, if our pH is optimal between 7.3 and 7.6, that's what we really like to keep our pH. If we hit a two, we have to call Matt. We are not at the point where we would need to close down yet, but we are asking Matt at this point with the main pool that he needs to be on top of it, to be aware that we may need to be adding chemicals to that pool soon, depending on our usage. At the waiting pool, if we hit the three, though, we had an agreement with Island County Health Department that we could go to a 2.5 in the waiting pool provided that our pH was above a 7.0. If it went to a 7.0, we would have to close the baby pool or we would need to bring that chlorine up to a minimum of three. What we are shooting for in both pools is a three to four. That is what we would really like to see with a 7.3 to a 7.6 pH level. We can go up to 10 parts per million, we don't want to. When we see readings in these pools go up beyond six, we would like to again notify maintenance. And we are asking maintenance to keep an eye on the fact that those chemicals are going up and make sure that we don't get too high and that they would make sure that they're adding the chemicals that they would need to, to bring that back down to a nice optimal balance. The lifeguards are being informed that if we do drop below what we are asking, what we are being told we need to keep our pools at, that they are to close that pool, but they are to try and keep on top of it so that we don't have to. If we see numbers starting to go down, we make note. We're going to take an extra reading in there to make. So we have one, I think, is we have three hours in between them or four hours in between them. If we see a one reading that we're still good, but we might be going down if we're looking at the reading before, we're gonna make note of that and we may take a reading an hour or two later instead of waiting that full three hours. If we find that we're still going in the wrong direction, we're going to try and not face any pool closures, but to get maintenance in here to address it before it goes down there. If we should drop below, we did drop below recently in our waiting pool, we dropped below the three. We closed the pool down right then. We had a huge number of people in that pool and that's what happens with huge numbers of people in the pool. Our chemicals got very, very worked out in that pool and we were having to close that down, call maintenance who came in and addressed it. And by the time, and they, it was, it was closed down during our swim team practice time. So by the time that our next open swim came along, we were back where we needed to be. We were able to open to the public. So the public only had about a half an hour where they were just dropped into that pool. So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to keep on top of it more and Matt and I both. And as I am going to be gone next week, I have asked that Rhiannon do this as well, that we are all coming in and we are taking extra precautions to double check the chemicals and that we take them ourselves to make sure that we are staying within what the lifeguards are saying, that they're, we're making sure that their readings not only are in compliance, but are being done correctly and are matching what the supervisory staff takes.
And now, the auto feeder being broken, what's the, what's the status on fixing that?
The auto feeder, they had to, because it's a very, very old antiquated system. The part that we needed for it had to be manufactured instead of just pulling it off of the shelf, put it into a box and shipped to us, in which case you would have had it already. So they are manufacturing the part, we are hoping that that part will be here in the next week.
And what about the UV system?
Matt is looking at what we would need to do to order some of the parts and he's doing some price checking, making sure that we have the best bang for the buck, basically.
Okay, do we have, do we have an expectation on when we'll either see more information on that or when we believe it would be fixed?
He's hoping to have, to have at least some good information for you guys by the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, as far as the, if you have to sit there and call Matt in, is he the only person that can, that can add chemicals?
Uh, no, Matt has an assistant as well that she, she is, if Matt is off call, Stephanie can come in and add chemicals. I do not allow the lifeguards to handle chemicals.
I understand.
And.
Well, it wouldn't, it would not be legal for them to do that.
Yeah, they have to train.
Oh, I know.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying, it's not that we don't allow them to, it's that it wouldn't be legal.
And one of the things that this, that this situation has, and this, this has really solidified in my mind, is the very dire importance for the aquatic director and for the executive director to have certified pool operators licenses. Currently, that is not a part of the job, the aquatic director's job description. I believe that it should be. I believe that both Matt and I could use some additional training. Matt's CPO is going to expire soon and we would need to have him updated. It's been a while since he's had.
Certified pool operator?
Mm-hmm, it's, it's. The certification really solidifies in your mind, it's training on how to deal with these sorts of things. And Matt's is old, his is coming up for renewal, I believe, in two months, three months.
How long, how long is it good for?
Uh, two to three years.
So it's like that old. It was either two or three years.
I can't remember whether it was two or three, I will, I will double check on that for you. Mine expired before my daughter was born, so mine expired at least 10 years ago. In which case, we have a lot of changes that have happened in the last 10 years and I believe that there should be more than just Matt who has that certification.
Do you know how much the course costs or can you do it online?
You cannot do it online. The last time I checked, the course costs, I will have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, if you would just email us and let us know how long, how long it would take and.
There are also other.
It's a day.
Well, there are also other curriculum that.
There's AFO as well.
Well, I'm just saying that are, that are for, for example, intended for an executive director as an example. So it may or may not be, I mean, I understand, I understand your point, but it, we probably wanna explore what the right curriculum is. I'm not looking at, looking at potentially if the price is cost, if it's cost prohibitive, we might wanna look at what, it makes the most sense.
My husband took it two or three years ago and I, if I remember correctly, it was three, between $300 and $400 to take the course. And that included the materials and the instruction.
But you'll give us information about that?
Yes, I will.
Sorry to interrupt you.
And then as far as one thing before we move on, say if somebody, I hate to use, no, or say, hooked in the pool. Either one.
It happens.
Who adds chemicals to that and what's the process that happens there?
Um, when somebody, when somebody has an AFR, that's what we call that.
Okay.
When we have an accidental fecal release or an AFR, are, we do have to close the pool. The pool will be closed for 30 minutes and maintenance is notified that they will need to come in and address any chemical issue.
And then it's 30 minutes from the time they add the chemicals to it or from the time they close the pool? I assume it's when they add the chemicals.
That's right, okay. So how long does it take the maintenance man to get here?
A lot of the times, one of them is here already, so we just notify them. Sometimes they're out in the back and we just walk out there, open the door and say, hey, we need to do something about it. If they're off site, usually within five minutes, one of them is here.
One of them being?
Either Stephanie or Matt, depending on which one of them has the emergency phone that they.
So I have to bring this up, so our maintenance man has a second job. Can he leave his job that quickly?
Yes, he can. He has made that arrangement with them that if there is an emergency at the pool, that he is able to leave and come up and take care of it. And he has been able to do that.
Okay. Can I ask a couple of questions? On the depth bath pool spa waiting chart here, it says call Matt if pool or waiting pool is at 7 pH or two parts per million or lower. And that is for the, it says pool and waiting pool, that's too low for the waiting pool.
If you see that we've actually updated that, there was a sheet that was on top.
Okay, thank you.
And Matt needs to actually update those reading logs. But we have covered, last Friday, we had all of our lifeguarding and swim lesson instructor staff in.
Where's the third one?
And we talked to them about what they would need to do before they were moving forward.
Alright, is that today's sheet?
Give me just a second to read this up again.
Yeah, yeah, it is today's sheet, alright, so.
That needs to happen tomorrow. I'm just saying, cause.
It's actually even this, however, if the waiting pool drops below 2.5, I mean, if the law says three, it says three.
And this was what I got from our Island County Health Department, that there was an agreement that they had that if the pH was above, it needed to be a 7.4, then we needed to, then they were, then their agreement was that they could keep the waiting pool open at a 2.5 if the pH was up at a 7.4.
Is there something I'm right? Exactly.
Uh, it, what she told me was waiting pool could, this is what she told me, is that if the waiting pool was open, the main pool could be 2.5 with a 7.4 pH, but that the waiting pool should never be below three.
Below three.
That, yes.
So then maybe I misunderstood what she said.
So, I mean, with, if you look at the WAC and just for the record, so if anybody wants to know, it would be, let's see, it's 246 is where, 246 dash 260 is the WAC I'm looking at, which is Water Recreational Facilities. And.
Can you just validate?
If we look at that, this sheet that the lifeguards is, that they're looking at is incorrect. The waiting pool, again, three or four is optimal, however, if the waiting pool drops below 2.5, please close the waiting pool. The law says three. If at 2.5, yeah. And then again, on the hot tub, bromine levels must remain at three or above.
It's never.
Actually, the law is four.
So we will change that.
Okay. And what I, what I would ask is, and I don't know who would do the training, maybe it would be you. You've got young people who are checking these, these chlorine and pH levels.
We do.
And they may or may not really know why it's so important. You know, you, I just pulled up a couple. The CDC has a really neat page, USA Swimming has a really neat page. If they could read some of this and you get into why it's important for that chlorine level to be at that because of E coli and everything else, but then the pH, what I was wondering is, and that's why I wanted to look at this, if the pH drops below 7.2, you start to get corrosion in the pipes. And here we have light bulbs that we can't replace in the pool because of corrosion. Could it be that the pH balance was out of whack, which has created problems with our, with our facility?
I suppose anything is possible, but we have things on the wall that corrode as well, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we do.
I mean, I know it's a pool and water, I get it.
It's a wet environment, unfortunately.
But I don't know, I don't know if there's any way you could put some, I mean, other than just saying, hey, kids, check the chlorine and pH levels, this is why we do it.
There is, there is a really good way of being able to put that. I can look at those and then make up a little something for them that's a little bit less tedious to read through.
I don't think any of it can hurt, but I will tell you that the lifeguard that I spoke to when I asked about the training, she was very knowledgeable, actually.
Well, there you go.
And it was great, and I'm not saying, you know, I think, I think the more information, the better. But she was talking about, well, you know, when the pH gets to be above a 7.8, that's when people's, you know, that's when.
That is awesome.
Yeah, I was really impressed, so I just wanted to share that.
Let her do the training. That's how, she's the airman, she gets to do the training, yeah, we know how this works.
We just, we just say that, you know, the monkeys run the zoo.
Thank you.
Hey, you know what's going on usually?
Oh, back to facility health standards, we're talking about the whole facility. Can I give a report on the dog park?
Sure.
Cause we're talking about.
No, and that's, no, that's great, because actually I wanted to bring that up as well, so please do. I'm curious to hear what you have to say.
Well, I went to the dog park twice, three times, actually. Twice in the past week, I think you went, so you can speak as well.
I've been there in the past week as well.
I'm, I'll be honest, I like the woods, by the way. The woods is really nice.
The woods has always been wonderful.
It's really nice.
Yeah, agree.
Do we, is that part of the park?
It is.
It is, yes.
I'm not so, I'm not so pleased with the gravel area. Uh, but I don't know how you could fix it other than, you know.
We need to bring in dump trucks.
Yeah. But inside that area, what I was a little disappointed in, inside the dog park, was the trash container. You know, the sign that when you walk in, there's a board there.
Dilapidated?
Dilapidated, that's a good way to put it. Very unmaintained and it looks bad.
What about the trash container, was it full or?
It's just, it needs repair.
It's falling apart.
Yeah, it needs repair.
It's falling apart and the wood is rotting out of it. Matt actually was down there just the other day and he brought back a list of things that need to be updated.
You know, and I think, because when you walk, I mean, I'm just, you walk in, it's like walking in the front door, right? And the very first thing you see is something, something that's not pleasant, it sets that. And you walk in there and that's the first thing you see and it's kinda like, ah.
Three fence posts.
Yeah, there's three fence, there's three fence posts, old fence posts there. Why are they there? There's nothing attached to them.
They're from the way it used to be.
Yeah, it was from the way that, they were there to hold a gate.
Well, those need to go because they don't need to be there, you know, you know what we're talking about?
I do, I do.
The doggy bags, there were some when we were there, although when I asked some of the people who go there, they were disappointed that they're not there more often. That sometimes they won't be there and they won't be there for three weeks. I don't know about that, but that's what this, this person said. Uh, they were concerned with the, where's the porta toilet? I said, well, I think it's there with the baseball diamonds. Maybe there should be a sign that tells them, hey, pour the toilet down that way, you know. There were, there was an old blue swimming pool over against the fence.
That's been there for a long time.
Well, it's, it's trash.
They, they fill it up with water for the dogs to cool off in.
Okay, what about the couches and?
Somebody, somebody, there was a.
The riding mower?
Matt said there was a riding mower, couches, a chair, a microwave and a bunch of, yeah. And he's having to take a truck over.
I'll be honest, that sounds good that somebody dumped it there, but then you go down by the baseball diamonds and you look that it hasn't been maintained very well and that is trash we've put there. I mean, where you've got stuff that's just, I don't have time to put it up, so I'm just gonna throw it out here. And it's just, it's chaos when you look at it, it's just very disorganized.
You got some pretty expensive stuff that's just laying out there in the sun and stuff like that.
I would, you know, one thing I have, had wanted to do and I just haven't had the chance is to go ask people who use it more frequently than I do, but I would even say some of the invasive blackberry growth surprised me very much. It just, it looks like a different park. I used to go there every day with my dogs and I currently don't, but it looks like a very different park. And so I, I'm not sure, this, I'm not sure why, what the deal was in terms of fetch and why we ended that agreement, but I have to say, I think they.
I got an idea, by the way.
Okay.
The transition program at the high school. You have a lot of young men and women, girls, who.
Young adults?
Young adults, who could probably help out at the same time, you know, maybe, maybe they make a little money or maybe it's volunteer, I don't, I hate to do the whole manual labor volunteer. You know, maybe it could, we could create a couple of positions for those kids in that transition program, goodwill to the community, to where we bring them in one day a week and they would. and they would come with a job coach. And they go around and they clean up that facility. And maybe you, maybe they, I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, yeah.
That you've come back with a proposal?
I will.
I'm not trying to just assign things to you, but it, I think you probably have, it sounds like you probably have more information.
Yeah.
We actually recently made an agreement with FRC Northwest to adopt the dog park.
Oh.
And they are sending their sailors out there voluntarily.
When are they going to start doing it?
Uh, they are actually planning a work B for this weekend, if it's not too hot, or the following weekend. I have a guy that I have been working with, they did one work B out there already. He and Matt are going to get together to work on a more comprehensive list of what we are going to expect from them, what we can provide to them, et cetera. I checked this all through Nathan Manny for legalities, and am taking his recommendations on what they are doing as far as signing in and having the sailors sign in for insurance purposes. We did draft a document and sent that over to them, and they were able to look at it. And they have a procedure in place where they're going to get their sailors to sign in on that document. And...
And they will provide it to Matt? They'll provide it to...
They're going to send that document to me every month, so that I know which sailors have been out to the park and are working there, because it will let me see which sailors I write the letter of, the volunteer letter for when they're looking for their evals or to go up and rank, whatever the case may be. I like to provide the letters to the commands to say that this person has volunteered. The guy that we were working with, he unfortunately got called on an unexpected debt. He is now back, and I'm very excited to get it cleaned up. He went out there the other day, he said he saw some of the same problems that you guys have just mentioned, and he's organizing the work crew as we speak. We spoke with him just yesterday morning.
Oh, that's nice to hear.
And at some point, we would like to also, once we get some of the signs, things updated up there, to put a sign up there saying that FRC Northwest is adopting that.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're working with them, and hopefully we'll get a more regular schedule with them going, so that we know exactly what we're needing to have done, and we can email a list over to them every week.
It's FRC Northwest?
FRC Northwest, correct. And I have the name of the contact, if you want it, it's two...
What's his name? Her name?
Nicholas Gaida.
I don't know him.
Nice guy.
We'll find him.
Yeah.
There you go.
If we could, maybe in the August meeting, just get an update that includes, so that we understand what that agreement entails, because I certainly don't want to be like, man, they didn't do this, and like, well, we didn't ask them to do that. Or whatever.
We have asked that, I asked Matt to get in touch with them and let them know exactly what we need to do.
And that's, I'm just saying, if we could feed that back to us, it would be awesome, so that we all have the same expectations. That'd be great. Cool. I'm so glad you brought that up. No, that's awesome. Timing is amazing.
So when would there be a time, maybe like next meeting or something, to really think about how to generate money for that off-leash dog park? Because I've got some ideas, and I know now's not the time, probably.
Well, I would say make sure that it's on the next agenda, if you want to discuss it. Make sure that it's on the next agenda. I think that's great. I mean, I think...
Send a note to Sean.
Okay.
And, or, if, you know?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Send a note to Sean. Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm not sure if this is... I'm not trying to be impertinent, bringing this up at the wrong time, but before we close on the facility health standards, I just wanted to, and I wasn't sure if I had sent a message, and I've been emailing you as Commissioner Five, because I thought you were Commissioner Five the whole time. So once they actually get you on as Commissioner Five, you'll get all these great emails from me. Surprise! So I apologize if you, if I have not been informing you correctly, I thought that was the protocol. I apologize for that. But in terms of, so I checked with the Municipal Resource Service Center in terms of the, I'll call it actions, that I took once the, once there were questions about the facility's health standards not being met. And according to MRSC, they saw no, they saw no issue whatsoever. So I realize that there, that there may be other opinions, but I felt that I was doing the right thing, and they did not see any problem or anything illegal about what was done.
Are you talking about us meeting with Matt?
Correct.
And asking questions?
Correct.
I didn't know you even doubted that.
I just wanted to be sure, well, here's the thing, is, is I, there are lots of, and I'm not trying to make this totally editorial, I just, I just wanted to close on that, that that was the follow-up that we received, or that I received. But for me, if there's a better way to do things, and if there was a more right way to do things, then I wanted to be aware of that. There, I think we're all trying our best for transparency. And, and so I just wanted to understand if there was, if there was a better process that could have been followed. And the response that I received from their consultant was no, that everything was fine. So just, I just wanted to put that out there, again, not trying to be argumentative in any way, but that was the advice I received. Moving on to budget for 2016. The, I think that the expectation here was just to, I just wanted us to start talking about what we thought our timeline was for that. Not to actually start discussing it, but it, we know that, we know it got to happen. So, yeah.
I know, here's, here's the situation we're going to run into. Let's just be out there. So the November election happens, and...
Once that, once that election is validated, is certified, we'll be out of office.
Be off the board for that in two months.
For a month, about five weeks, but yes.
I would like to, I don't know if it would be best to do it before you guys leave. You see where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Because it would have to almost be done before January 1st, right?
Oh, absolutely.
I just think it might be unwise to put that on a brand-new board.
I agree, because we went through me.
Because this is going to be a very strange time, how this is going to happen.
It is.
And it would be nice if we could have that budget in place before the November election.
I agree, although I think we would certainly, we certainly extend, we would like those, the incoming commissioners to participate.
I agree, I think that's a great idea, actually.
Yeah, I mean, it's, at their, you know, at their want to do that, but...
The last, the last regular meeting is October 15th. That doesn't mean we couldn't, we couldn't vote on it in a special meeting sometime before Election Day, early in November. But I'm just saying, October 15th is kind of a good...
I know that when...
Well, I think we need to, sorry, I think we need to start earlier.
I know that when...
I'm not saying start earlier, but I'm saying that, if we want to do it before the election, we're not going to sit there for another, you know...
Well, actually, so we will be in office, so we will be there for the November meeting, because I believe that the results are not certified until...
No, I won't, because I'm...
We have the same status here. No, but the election, it's, it's...
No, we don't, because remember, I'm not running for my, the position I'm sitting in.
I know, me neither. I know, that's why I said, we're in the same vote here. Yes, but the election, I believe, is not certified until the...
It's when it's certified.
Yeah, it's not, it's when it's certified. And so we will still be here. I don't, I'm not saying that it changes how we do the budget, but I'm just trying to make clarification.
Shoot, I already deleted that memo, that meeting from my calendar, because I thought I didn't have to come.
Being that your calendar is right there, go ahead and pencil back in. Anyway.
All right, but I still think October is a good time to shoot for.
Well, but do we think that we could start, do we think that it would be fair to begin it in September?
Yes.
I think that when former Director Walker was here, I want to think it may have been September time for him to start it, and that thing went on forever.
Couple of months.
That's, you said, how long do you, do you think it normally lasts? Because if this does take a couple of months, we don't want to do it in October.
You know, I, here's, here's what is the blessing and the curse. I think that there is still plenty that is fresh.
I was going to say, we just did this.
It's not, yeah, it's not funny, but I think there's plenty that is still fresh in our minds, that, that isn't burned in our minds, that I think that it will not be difficult to pick up. And I agree with your point, because my very first meeting as a commissioner, I had to vote to approve the budget that then we had, and I felt very uncomfortable doing so. Honestly, I felt very uncomfortable doing it, did it, and we redid the budget, not the, yeah.
I say, I vote, we give, you know, the budget, and then the other, you know, new members can bitch at us three months later.
So you need to propose the budget to us, is that accurate? I believe that is accurate.
Unless we come up with a...
Yeah.
So, so can you...
You can also set a subcommittee to help, but, yeah.
Is that usually what happens?
It's up to your discretion. I think it's happened in the past.
You know what, let's, let's, how about we do this? So we've kind of touched on it, let's wait until the August regular meeting to go into more detail, is that fair? Okay.
Meanwhile, we'll start gathering some stuff together.
Well, I mean, that way, because you know what, I've never been through a budget planning session. I know previously we had, last year there were workshops with the public, and I don't, I don't want us to try to, you know, to leave anything out, out of ignorance, because I think we all mean well, and...
We just went through it, so we've, you know, I liked the format we used last time, I think I'll probably take that direction again.
Yeah, but maybe when, maybe the regular meeting in August, we can solidify our plan. Is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds great.
All right, I just didn't want to not talk about it. Open records requests. I put this on there because we are no longer seeing it in our reports, and I think we, I think we need...
It's in there.
Okay, it wasn't, okay, it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the previous package?
It wasn't, it wasn't. It got left out of that one.
Right.
And in this one, I actually added one after I signed out the packet. So in the packets I printed for today, there are two listed in there. One is the one that Ms. Vought was referring to, that...
Can you, can you direct us to it? Yeah, sorry, but let's, let's start there.
In staff reports, I think in the admin corner?
Okay. I would also suggest that you could even just have your own, you don't even need a corner, you can actually have a legitimate, like, report.
Can I explain a little bit on this one, if I could? Okay, this, this public record request, it has to do with former Director Walker's evaluation. He had one evaluation. They can't find it. Well, here's the history on that. So August 7th of 2013, his evaluation is done, and Bill Walker had asked for that evaluation to be done in the public. Instead of in an executive session, he wanted everything out in front of the public. And that, so you can go to the minutes and to the audio file, which is available, to hear that entire evaluation. August 15th of 2013, well, let me back back, on August 7th, right at the end of his evaluation, former Commissioner McDougall made a motion, and it was seconded, and that was to terminate then Director Walker's contract. And, and there was some finigling politically to push that off till August 15th, at which time I made a motion to rescind that tabled motion, and it was pulled back. And so a person could go listen to those two audio files, August 7th, 2013, and August 15th. Well, the funny thing happened in August, is the, the, that evaluation was supposed to, like a summary, where they put it all together, and here's your evaluation. And in September, the motion was made by, I think, Commissioner Merrill to push that off till October. Well, in October, Commissioner McDougall at the time, he pushed it off till November. In November, it gets pushed off till December, but at that November regular board meeting, Director Walker resigns. So I honestly don't think there was ever a summary done of the evaluation. I don't think that you're going to find it. You've looked for months.
We've looked.
I think what we do is, we refer them to the minutes from basically those two meetings in August, September, October, November, and the audio files from them, and we close this thing. You're not going to find that, if you haven't found it by now. And me being on the board at the time, I don't remember ever seeing a summary of that evaluation. It just kept getting pushed back, until finally Bill Walker resigns. So, I hope that helps.
We have looked extensively for it.
And I think that we would be well within the law to say, we do not have this, we have expended all this time to look for it, here are the minutes and the audio files, and we closed this public record request.
Yeah, because if he resigned before the summary was done, that's a moot point.
And then the other one that we have still outstanding, it's been open for a while, is requesting sensitive potential information pertaining to the indicating case, and basically it's any email communication to or from our insurance company. Erica has requested that I send that off to legal counsel for review as far as releasing things confidential, the redacting process for them. We have not heard back from them, so I've actually asked her to please give him a call and see if we can have some, some info, so we can move forward on that one. And that has all been communicated to the interested parties.
Thank you. One other thing I just wanted to bring up, as it relates to this, is if, if we have folks who are handling open records requests that have not taken the open records training, then we should make sure that they do it before the next regular meeting. If it's all handled, then great, but if it is not, then it would just be, because anyone who is handling, who is handling those requests in any capacity is required to have the training by law. And yes, and you have to...
Well, my question, no, my question was, I took the training, because also there's on the city planning commission.
Okay.
Which is, that's also required under that.
So OPMA and public records?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, public records, I think I may have done that, but the OPMA I did that.
Okay.
Does that, that discuss, that covers it for that part?
Sure, yeah.
You've done it?
You've done it within ninety days of, yeah, how long ago did you do it?
Uh, it was about eight months ago.
Okay.
All they said was, you have to have taken it within ninety, or by the time ninety days has passed. He's already taken it.
Yeah.
And the other one I was up there doing, please call that to me, so I make sure I get that one done.
Surely, surely.
The public records request, because I don't think I've done that one.
Okay. Can, can we get him on to Commissioner Five there?
Yes, I will get him on Commissioner Five.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay. No, that's, I just wanted to be sure, and that, so that you will have your...
It might be Monday, but...
That's fine.
Okay, well, that's, they're just exciting things.
Lots of details.
We'll begin to freedom before you get the email.
There we go.
Thank you.
Um, alright, um, and, and by the way, so I'm gonna just take a quick process check at 9:35. Um, there are things that we can certainly, if, if we feel the need to, we can put off, um, if, if we have a hard stop or if we lose, what have you, but I'm, I'm gonna keep going unless we, um, decide to defer anything. Um, the fitness club, um, we got, so, uh, again, I put that on here because we, we got handed something a couple of months ago and it was never discussed.
At the May meeting? Because I was there, here it is.
Oh, okay, there we go, there we go, and, and I think that there are some. So, I, I, I'm not sure, I, I, well, everyone doesn't have it, so, I mean, we could potentially either make copies or we can go back through it. I, I think that there was just some concern, and I haven't had a chance to, uh, hold on a second, sorry. Yeah, and, and I think somehow, whether it was, um, accidental or whatnot, I think we were under the impression, um, last winter, we, um, we asked for the program because there was, um, low results on it and there was very little discussion about it. Um, we asked for the program to halt until we had an opportunity to review it. Um, that obviously has not been the case, and, um, and so, I, while, I mean, we can cover it in our program review, I just wanted to bring it up because we were handed a bunch of pieces of paper, which, uh, were very informative, but for me, they don't tell me how we're gonna get the program to succeed, um, so. Can we, um, well, I'm just, I'm just not sure where to go with this, but, um, because I think we need to have a discussion about it, if we want to, we can include it in our subcommittee report next month, that's the easiest thing, since, since you are not, you are at the dearth of information on it, I certainly don't wanna belabor this, um, with, with you not having read it either, meaning just not feeling.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, um, so we will, I will, we will postpone this for August.
Okay.
Okay, is that fair? Is that fair? Okay. Again, I'm not trying to rush anything, but I just don't feel like it's fair to have a conversation, um, when we don't all have the same information.
Steve, do you still have this? They handed this to us in the May meeting, does that look familiar at all? It just got handed, just credited at the end of the meeting.
We can make two, we can make copies right this evening and get it to you.
Send these out to us electronically, or do you have these, or?
I don't have those.
Okay.
So, let's make a couple copies tonight, and we'll go.
I think I have one copy of it.
Okay, can you, uh, because we wanna make sure, Sean probably lost his, so, so Wendy and I have ours, but just, you just email it to everybody and go.
Appreciate how you boiled that down, thank you. No, that's.
Basically, it's like, if you, if you look at our houses, we're probably paper hoarders and keep everything, so.
Speak for yourself.
Everything is to care of itself.
I do that too. What? Alright, so, moving on to the fall schedule, it looks like we have a very colorful chart in front of us.
We tried to make it as easy as we could.
Um, so if, yes, so, well, it's easy if you know what the colors mean, or is there, is there, is there a key?
If you, if you read.
I, I, I can read, but I, I, I could have read without the colors.
No, I got it.
You'll see the whole, the blue, our lap swims.
I like it.
I like that you colored it in, but, um, how many, where it's NWA aerobics, how many lanes is that? Is that two, I mean, three, or is that four? Because it's a little more than half.
Well, and honestly, honestly, the way that they're divided out, you just have to toss out the window because splitting cells and rearranging stuff, it just splits it. This whole thing I actually need to go through and reformat. So, basically, the two things side by side, all it represents is that those two activities will be going on at the same time. It does not mean that our.
Not to scale, it is not to scale.
Exactly.
Thank you. And often, Coach has a smaller group in the morning, and he opens up everything else for laps. So, he takes what he needs.
I'm just still confused.
But I, I would like. As he needs to.
Somebody could add here in per en, perhaps, like three, three lanes or four lanes.
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, we, because we talked about that, and I just, I need to know.
And, and it will vary, is part of the issue. Because like Erica was saying, if he has a small group, he might go down to one or two lanes and open the rest up.
And that's fine, but what's scheduled? Because then it's like, he can't, he won't take more than.
Three lanes.
Okay, so it's three lanes, and is aerobics in three lanes? I can't remember.
Yeah, they typically.
Alright, that's fine then.
And on the next page, you actually have explanation, which we will provide with the schedule to the makers, that will kind of detail it out. Because on a grid schedule, we cannot put all of those little notes and fit it into.
Sure, right. But you can mark them all up with pens, right?
Yes, absolutely. Or I could use a color printer, if we were allowed to use the color printer, that would be.
There are actually, there are actually many, many techniques that you can use outside of a color printer, because the thing you have to worry about when you, when you color print things is if anyone ever needs to copy it on a normal copier, you want to be able to delineate it.
Well, we, we copied this one.
Yes, you did it. Open swim, at a reasonable time for kids.
This one, and let me tell you, Steve.
So glad to see that.
I am going to give our coach some big kudos, because that meant him losing that night for his kids, for his NWA kids.
You tell him I said thanks, that's the right thing to do.
And he, you know, how often do you see a swim coach that gives a inch?
Yeah.
And he's given a lot on this schedule.
This is, this is awesome for families with small kids, that one night a week.
That one night a week.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, um, having the, what, you guys have some of the big changes that, we'll, we'll just go over those quickly. The special program time, which we had set aside for just special programs, we are now adding the lap swim in there, so we will extend our lap swim all the way through until 2:30 instead of, uh, ending our lap swim at 1:30.
What is special program?
Um, usually that's a PRT, Navy PRT.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
It is also the time that we do our school group lessons. However, during any of those programs, we don't use the entire pool, so there's no reason why we cannot open that, the rest of that pool up for laps during that time.
And so many days, um, I would be here working on something with Erica, and it's like, I look out and there's this beautiful empty pool.
Gotcha.
So, if we don't have a special program in the pool, there will be six lanes open for laps. If we have a special program in the pool, we will make adjustments just based on how much that special program needs. Traditionally, our PRTs only need two lanes, which means we would have four available for lap swim. Um, the other change that we, we did make is on Wednesday nights, you'll see that we did move an open swim, family discount swim, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. This, uh, meant that our coach could not run his team during that 5:30 to 6:30 time slot, which has always been his, and, uh, we, we talked and we came to an agreement that, uh, he could, he could give that one up and, uh, move his a little bit later. Um, I think to infusely, we do have a later lap swim time now, from night, from 8 o'clock till 9 o'clock. We do have some people that were interested in a little bit later lap time, seeing as they don't get out of work until 7 or 7:30, that one works really well for them on those nights. We've asked, uh, we've had some people asking us for an additional Zumba class. Our Zumba class on Tuesday night, I believe, was close to 30 people. It was absolutely enormous, they were spilling out all over the place, they, the teacher is phenomenal, they were having a blast, it was the big hit of the century. So, we have gone ahead and put an additional Zumba class on Thursday nights with the instructors' happy support. Um, additionally, they, our aerobics had asked for an additional aerobics or Zumba class from, uh, on Saturday mornings. So, we asked them what time train would work, and they said sometime around 10 o'clock would work nicely for them. Since our swim team finishes at 10 o'clock, we went ahead and put half the pool, we were actually letting our pool open on Saturday mornings a half an hour earlier than we normally do for lap swim, and we're adding the, uh, Zumba or aerobics classes to the other half of the pool at, from 10 to 11. Um, then our lap swim will then continue on until 2.
So, the diagram shows lap swim starting at 8, is that when it's starting, or is lap swim starting?
Well, don't, don't look at the time grid on the left side, that's where it gets all messed up.
Okay.
Just because.
Look at the times that are under the program.
Just look at what it says with the program.
Find a better program to do this one, because this sucks.
Can I ask you a question, Erica?
This is what we inherited, and it's.
Find a different program.
I need to take time to rebuild the whole thing, which I plan to before we release it to the public.
Alright.
On this lap swim on Saturday, 10 till 2, how, I mean, ha- have we been doing anything similar to this on Saturdays?
We've been doing 10:30 until 2.
How, how, how many people come?
Crowded.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
It's busy.
That's what I wanted to hear, Sunday the same way?
Sunday is the same way, and of course, during that time, we have our, we have our open, our sauna, hot tub, and waiting pool are open during that time as well. So, we do get quite a few people that come in during that time, honestly.
Okay.
Our, at 10 o'clock, or 10:30, our lap lanes, we can have no room. We've had, we've had where every single lane is full of at least three or four people. So, and we, we also may have a lane for private lessons set up, so it gets very busy. Actually, taking this back a half an hour and allowing them to come a half an hour early will allow some of that early crowd to get done a little bit earlier and allow those that are coming a little bit more toward the middle of the time to filter through, that should help with the lane crowding a little bit.
What is the Sunday NWA?
Um, Coach, this was, this was Coach's, um, please, 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 if I give up my 5:30 to 6:30 on Wednesday night, could you please give me this? Was one of, one of the concessions that he asked, um, he has, he would like a time when he can do a lot of technique work with his younger, with his younger group. The Wiggle Fish 1 and 2, with the, um, as you will see in his staff report, with the fact that the program is picking up, with the fact that he does have all groups in the water at the same time, unfortunately, the kids that bear the brunt of the lack of technique focus that he is able to give them are his Wiggle Fish 1 and 2, which are his two bottom groups. And those are the groups that would normally come in on Wednesday nights from 5:30 to 6:30. So, he asked whether he could please have a little bit on Sunday evening during our lap swim, he doesn't think he would need, need more than a couple of lanes, if that, to work with those, with that, to give that group an opportunity to come and get a little bit more of his time devoted to their level.
So, these, this Saturday and this Sunday time would be him, it wouldn't be alternately staffed, is that accurate?
This, there's, you mean on this one here?
The Sunday would have lap swim.
The Sunday has lap swim going on.
No, no, what I'm saying is, is he would be, he would be, he would be, uh, running these practices on Saturday and Sunday, it wouldn't be, that we wouldn't spend any personnel, well, but it's, but it's not on our schedule, so.
So, yes, those are, those are his.
Okay.
And that's when he would plan to be here.
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the, uh, 2015, 2016 fall winter, spring schedule as presented to us this evening.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. The high school, and I know I bet you all the time, but just because this was in the past, it doesn't mean it's what we should have. But is this, is this what the high school did last year, is this what they're gonna wanna do, or are they gonna? I, I, I don't remember what they looked like last year.
The difference different at all for the high school is the Wednesday night timing shifted.
Okay.
Yep, the Wednesday night time had to be shifted because we did put that open swim in there. They, um, all, this is their overflow time.
Okay.
Um, they normally practice at the same time as NWA, from the 2:45 to, to 4.
Oh, okay, so they, and they did, I thought they, they swam during this.
And this is an overflow time that allows kids who are participating in Key Club and in Roxy and those types of programs to be able to still participate in the program they offer, that other practice. She gets a much smaller group that comes.
Is Coach Paul still the coach?
She is.
Do we not need to put, you know, the two lanes or whatever it is that they get on these, this 2:45 to 5:30 time?
Yeah, we.
I can slide it in.
Yeah, I would say we can slide that in there.
I, I just, that's why I was confused, and I, um, because I did notice, or I am pretty sure, I read the, the contract that we had with Oak Harbor High School, then I looked at our winter schedule, and what they had contracted for was not what was on our schedule.
And we have not signed their contract for this year, and I wanted, and I told them that we were gonna hold off until we approved our schedule here tonight, and we were able to, to have a more definitive time frame for it.
Okay.
Um, this needs a, sorry, but it, it needs an expiration date, um.
I was actually just going to say.
Okay.
You beat me to it. So, and I don't remember what the exact date is, but it's, when we mapped out your swim lessons, it's like right there when school's getting out, do you remember the exact date? Hold on.
Well, so, but let me.
It's June 6th.
6th, 9th. I would say, I think it's either June 18th or June 19th.
Yeah, because that's, that's when we'll flip over to the other.
We flip over to the summer schedule, and then our swim lessons, we usually start our two week at the end of June.
So, it would, I would say have it go through June 20th.
So, why did we expect in February, why did we expect an updated schedule in February of this year that we didn't see until June or so? I, I just, I, I was new, and so I'm, I'm trying to make train this.
I think there was discussion about possibly trying to adjust for an earlier open swim time or something like that once the high school swim season ended, but then we have Special Olympics that slid right into their lane time, um, for their practices. So, I think that's why we ended up not making that adjustment.
So, I think that, uh, from, from my perspective, I think, and, and this probably bleeds into the next one, the, the only concern I have is that sometimes we hold really close to the schedule and sometimes we don't. And, and I think we have to decide whether or not, so, for example, uh, and this is, I'm, I'm just trying to, I wanna just say both options. Um, either we, we approve a shorter schedule and then determine, so if we're trying some new things out, which we said we were going to, then we, we look at the schedule again in a shorter time period and say, hey, we're okay with this, this way, or that didn't work, let's try something else. That's one approach. The other approach would be, we approve this, but then we have, then we go back and make amendments as necessary.
And honestly, for us, that would be the easier route. Um, it's, when we put these schedules out to our public, they come in, and this is what they're going to expect until next summer.
So, then actually, the shorter one would be, would be better, because then they only expect it through whatever time period we say, whether it's the end of the year or whatever. Because otherwise, then what you're saying is, so, it's like a fairy schedule, right, they come out with one every quarter. I, I'm just, based on what you just said, which is they get it in their heads and they're not, they're not accommodating to changes, because it's, well, this one says it's until this date. So, in actuality, I believe that a shorter one that says whether it's three months or five months, or whatever the months are, I don't know the right answer. But then they're only expecting it through that date and we publish a new one.
I would then recommend that we would go with one that kept us going all the way through high school season, in which case you would review again, um, for a spring schedule, so this one would stay through fall and winter, since our high school does swim both of those seasons.
But they, they end, their last time is in February, correct?
Yeah, end of February.
So, we're gonna want to review it, um, for like, change it first of March or?
Yeah, in February to, to begin in March.
No, we wanna review it in, we wanna review it in January.
To begin.
To begin in the first.
To begin in March.
However, sorry, we, we have, we have a, I mean, we have a motion on the floor, it would either need to be amended or what have you, I'm, I'm, we're still in discussion.
How do I withdraw that motion?
You can just withdraw it, and then the second one has to be withdrawn also.
I would like to withdraw my motion.
And then the second one need to be withdrawn.
I didn't make a motion, I just said.
No, you, but you seconded it.
Oh, that's right, okay, so, yes, and I withdraw my seconding.
Right. And then you'd make a new motion.
I move that we accept the 2015-16 fall winter schedule as written, adding the high school hours in there with a termination date of.
To 2018?
28th February, or is, is an extra leap year?
I don't know, I was wondering.
Hang on, hang on.
It is, it is.
Okay, so 29th February.
So, starting 9/6, do you want that in your motion?
What?
Do you want 9/6, does the start date in your motion?
Well, it would have to start when the other one finishes, right?
Yes, thank you.
Um, is there, is there a second?
A second. My question is, when does, when does the boys' season end?
End of February.
It ends sometime in February, I don't remember what.
Are you sure, like, the state doesn't?
State is usually, the 20th, 21st, 22nd of February, it's all in that third week of February.
Okay, well, you would know, believe me.
Something else to consider when you guys are discussing changing it so frequently, we pay almost $50 for every one of those posters. So, that's gonna be an added expense in your budget, um, every time we have to have a poster redone.
Take one.
And we have to print new schedules in mass to, to our public.
The more I think about it, I think we should follow the school year and then amend it as necessary.
But if you amend it, you still have to change, I mean, the printing costs don't change, so, I, I don't, that's not really an impetus.
Small amendment, we often have, we will just do the schedule change and publish that without changing the huge one, um, so that's our minimal cost.
Much of our minimal cost.
Well, but for that matter, if, if our expectation is to keep it somewhat the same, then all we're changing, all we have to change, we, we don't have to print a fancy color thing every time you put a new heading on it, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be rude in saying that, I'm just saying that there are certainly, I, I don't think we expect, and/or perhaps one thing that we could look at is something that doesn't require a disposable printing cost every time as a solution moving forward. Um, I realize everyone has a lot to do, so I'm not saying, gee, and all this for a time that you have.
I think it's about being a little professional when people walk in, so that you don't look like you're at the farmer's market with your little stand of prices. Um, so, you know, I only do these small changes up there, I just don't want to get in the habit of doing that all the time.
And that poster is.
And I don't think.
The poster is used a lot.
I, I understand, but we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about six months, so, I mean, as opposed to nine months.
So, my question is, since you're talking about that poster, there's no dates on that poster, right?
No.
So, when we make a poster for this, similarly, stay with the same schedule next year.
No, exactly.
You choose the same sign, hey, let's get out that sign, sign A comes back out.
We were able to do that for the summer schedule because we went with our same summer schedule.
Okay.
Still have a reason to do.
Okay, anyway.
Let's go.
Alright, so, um, is there any more discussion? Alright, so, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
I love that open swim on Wednesday.
You need to, you need to make sure.
Who seconded the motion, I was, I was listening, not writing, you did, okay, good, thanks.
I did.
Sorry, I should've said that, I should've said that out loud. You know what, don't, don't say all of that or she'll write it. No, Southside Indianapolis, yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
And then more to you too.
So, in terms of, so moving on, in terms of schedule deviations, um, I, I kind of already touched on it, and I didn't know if we needed to have further discussion about, because something came up at the last meeting where there was a, well, gee, we're gonna, we were talking about changing it for this period of time, and Sean said, well, if we're, i- if we, I should say Chairman Merrill, um, said, well, if we are gonna change it, we have to vote on it, and my response was, well, we don't do that anyway. So, I, I, I think it just bears the discussion as to, are we voting on schedule changes or are we not? Um, and, and that's why I brought it up, and I don't know kind of what the consensus of our board is.
I, it's ours, it's our schedule, and so, since we have to vote to approve it, it seems to me, if they're gonna make changes to it, we have to approve of that. I, I get it when there's like a, you know, oh, we're gonna open up these lanes for this time, because we can, because they're not, you know, that's, but, any other, um, significant changes, I would think, would have to be approved by the board.
Well, my one comment is, we just voted for. Well, my one comment is, we just voted for that. If that's going to be deviated, who gives them that authority?
That's what I was.
It has to be voted on in order for that to be changed by the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that.
I'm sorry, you should've told her.
As far as, as large deviations from the schedule go, I believe, especially if we're switching a program from one time to another, that definitely needs to be through the board. I think that if I'm finding that there is a program that may not be as big as we wanted to and I'm able to open up an extra lap lane, or I'm, I've got an influx suddenly of an aerobics class and I need to pull out an extra lane line and take down a lap lane, um, these are changes which may happen very, very quickly from day to day. If I have to get the board to vote on every single one of those, I wouldn't be able to run the business properly.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Well, if I may, real quick.
Yeah, sure, yeah, go ahead.
As far as that goes, that's not making a change to that schedule. We did not sit there and said, you will use five lanes, four lanes, whatever. We just said, these are the things that are going to happen if you wanna change other things, you know, as far as lanes, whatever. That's, has nothing to do with that schedule.
You should have.
So as long as the prevailing activity is on here, is taking, is taking place, then there are no, and really this is a policy clarification, so I don't think there's anything to vote on, I, I think it's more clarification, but as long as whatever's on here is going on, if, if that, if that changes, then that's something we need to.
Exactly.
So what about when we, and we actually did put it on here on your page too, that, that early morning weekend lap swim time, the morning aerobics on Saturdays, and then that one thirty to two thirty, they may be canceled for classes, other things. And we also gave you guys a list of no school dates where we will do afternoon open swim instead of that one thirty lap swim. You know, we do have things like that that come up where Key has, you know, his kayak class is coming, or we have a lifeguarding class in the water.
Uh, that's a good point.
Well, I, I think.
The type of thing you're concerned about, or?
Well, I think we need, I think, I think there needs to be awareness overall, so I, while I realize this might be a, hey, Wendy, great idea about how do we do that, and I, I get it, I, I think we need to be able to see those things on our schedule at some point. I, I think we need to. And if that, I mean, there, there are different ways to accommodate that, whether it's, you print fewer and you print it monthly, I'm not, I'm just throwing stuff out there, I'm not telling, you know, or if it's, you find a way to asterisk the modifications or, or something, but.
And we tried to do that a little bit by marking the times.
I can see that, yeah, yeah.
Pete's kayak class is the one that takes up, and he will actually take up N W A C time and into the lap swim time for his kayak classes. And, um, you know, he's, he's been phenomenal about communicating with the people that are normally running those programs and we, you know, we scheduled, coach will come in a little earlier, he'll just cut his program out a little bit earlier and the lifeguards will just.
Right, but, but keep in mind, if this is a tool for communicating with the public, I, I think that we do ourselves a disservice a little bit if you can't see all of the programs that are offered, whether or not you're directly paying someone at our counter or registering for them elsewhere. And, and I, I mean, as a, as kind of a secondary consideration, it seems like something we should be able to see on here somewhere, and I, I don't know the best answer.
Can I ask you a question? There are times, uh, like during the holidays, for example, when swim school's not going on, right? So those, so you would have the freedom to do what, whatever you needed to do in those times, right, to fill those spots? I mean, is that, is that kind of what you're asking for here?
Well, this is just, we were providing this to you guys for reference when you're approving the schedule, those are dates when instead of that one thirty to two thirty lap swim, that will be open swim during those times. Um, that was really successful for us last year to open it up for.
Don't you guys think they should have the freedom to move on some of that stuff? To make decisions, everyday type decisions like that? I mean, I mean, because we really are about.
It shouldn't be every day.
But we're, no, but we really are about making money, I mean, I mean.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, and if it behooves us when kids are out of school to open up for this two hour spot to put forty kids in the pool, you know?
Oh, absolutely, but I think, I think part of what we're talking about is, is having an understanding for when those are things we need to approve and, and not, right? I don't think anybody's saying, hey, don't, don't do something that makes sense, but it's, it's, I think it's visibility not only for us, but I also think it's visibility, if, again, if this is the communication vehicle with the public, and, and it's not the only one, I know that, but it, but it is the primary one if that's what we're spending, if the most spend is on.
And I guess where I look at it in my mind, and I think Erica agrees to be honest, if it's a, we're making a modification for a date because it makes sense, she should have the freedom to make that call. If it's, we're gonna make this modification ongoing, that's where you guys need to decide.
Plus, plus, it's, it's more of a case of, if it's something that an individual's gonna come do or a family's gonna come do because it's lap swim or open swim, or, or aerobics, and you, you change it from one of those to one of the more selective things, that would be a hard, that most members of the public would get pissed, it's like, this is the time I have for open swim or lap swim.
We're not gonna juggle programs around.
Well, I know you won't touch aerobics, but.
Right, but you mean getting less, less inclusive, something that's less inclusive than what was already there?
Yes, and it's, if you're cutting out lanes, it's like, that's one thing, because you know, suddenly you've got fifty kids that, you know, we're gonna have swim lessons for, and it's like, fine.
And we really do make every effort to post it online, in-house, as soon as we know there has to be a schedule change. People don't read unfortunately, so no matter how much we try to communicate it, we are still gonna have people show up and be very angry.
The one thing that I may also add is, when we voted for this here, we voted for the schedule, this page here is part of the schedule that we voted on, which already has on there, Monday through Friday, one thirty, two thirty lap swim, Saturday, Sunday lap swim, aerobics maybe, have to reduce, reduce land space or council due to special programs. Any deviations from the printed schedule, we post it on our Facebook page and on our website is, you know, in advance. So, the way I look at it, because the, because the, the way it was worded was we voted for this schedule.
Correct.
This schedule includes the notes on the back.
Absolutely.
So I don't think we need to, it gives you some leeway to do some stuff, that's all I'm getting at.
I, I hate to say this, it was like, we approved the schedule and it says fall, winter, spring, but, um, we approved it for a certain date, so it's only fall, winter, right?
Right, and you didn't say spring when you.
Oh, did I just say fall, winter?
You have specific dates on it, so that's, that makes it.
One word, no, just.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I, I think, I think we're, I think we're clear. Um, private lesson program, uh, this is on here because I, we knew that we had a, a backlog of requests and that we had at one point stopped taking requests, and so I just wanted to see where we were at with that.
Backlog is gone down significantly, private lesson requests will be accepted again August first.
So I have to ask that question, and is that, are, or do we have people who, I mean, to where this person isn't always staying at the top of the list and these person here are always staying down at the bottom? You know where I'm going with this?
Rhiannon and I had a long conversation about this and we are going to work on actually assigning private lesson instructors to private lessons so that those get taught.
Okay, just to make sure kids aren't getting left out.
Correct.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And there are going to be some times when instructors would be a better fit. For example, if we have a special needs kid, I have instructors who are, who are phenomenal with special needs and some that are not a good, good fit for special needs. So we may have, um, an instructor who's not able to teach an upper level because they're, that's not their forte, and we will be working with our instructors' best abilities to match to the kids that are really for private lesson. And Rhiannon and I are both working on a way to work to assign those to instructors.
Is that your maintenance guys?
It is.
I better take this out there for them.
Yeah, they, they might like.
May I be excused to take this?
Sure, stick it back out where you found it, they'll, they'll find it when they need it.
We still have a quorum.
We, indeed we do. Employee vacation process and tracking, the reason I put this on here, not just because you're going on vacation for a week, no, the reason I put this on here was because actually there were unanswered questions with the former director and, and, and so when the whole thing came up about the process, or that, hey, we're taking vacation, it, it kind of raised that question that was never answered last year, um, due to like, no one who's sitting, like, in this room, employees sitting in this room, but I, I, how do we track it?
Employees are to notify me via email when they are trying to modify their vacation time or personal time, and then paychecks maintain the, um, time off rule for, for us.
And you make an entry in that?
I do.
Okay, sorry.
When I process payroll for the time that she actually goes on.
Or any of the salary books, okay, sorry, okay.
But my only issue is, I'm trying to make sense of how to make quick books reflect that, because when I was trained, that was never covered with me, so look at it, yes, I have no idea what I'm looking at, but I am trying.
You're figuring it out.
I am the first one that she has, since she has taken over the position, I am the first one to have, to have notified her via email that I was taking vacation.
It has been.
So.
Okay, so, so you're, so we are formalizing the process, or you have formalized the process, you're trying to make sure that it reflects correctly?
On quick books.
On quick books, okay.
And that, and that the days that I use are deducted from my accrual, so, yeah. We're, I won't talk about that today, so we're, we're on.
And so you monitor that, you will monitor that, like?
Paycheck.
Yep, paycheck, I can actually log into my paychecks and see how many hours I have accrued, so I can make sure that, that I don't take off too many days, and then she would have to start deducting it from my pay, so I make sure that I have the days on the books. And I can check my own status of how many days I have accrued by looking into my paychecks and, Joanne can see that information as well, and we make sure that we're communicating about those.
What's the criteria for getting a vacation?
Salary.
I mean, all salaried personnel?
Salaried personnel have a, have a vacation or in personal time, hourly staff do that.
They work over forty hours a week, do they get vacation or not?
No. Just send them off with their lesson.
And, and so technically we have four salaried positions, we currently only have three salaried employees?
I count myself as one and a half anyway.
Well, three and a half according to Erica. Salaried employees, okay, thank you, I just, it was one of those like, we never got that answered and, and I appreciate that very much.
They may want to look at this someday.
I gotta look at state law, because I'm kind of confused with that a little bit, I'm not that sharp on it right off the bat.
You're confused about what, sorry, I, I don't want to.
As far as vacation and stuff like that, as far as state law says with that.
Well, it's based on the contract that we, basically the employment contract that we have with our employees. So they're actually prescribed a certain amount, it's, it's either a certain amount maximum per year, or it's, it's probably per pay period, an accrual per payment.
Well, I just know that if you work over, if you work full time, is anything over, I think it's twenty-eight hours, uh, a week now, it used to be thirty-two, that there is stuff that employees get.
Health benefits.
Exactly, considering full time and stuff like that there, but I'm not sure as far as, you know, the vacation effects in there or not.
From what my understanding is, it is, we do have to offer them the health benefits, which when we have employees that are consistently working, the hours that would qualify them for that, that we do offer that to them, we are, we do that.
Okay.
And we do keep up with that. And most of our employees have turned it down, which is their right to do as well.
That's interesting, because the federal government doesn't have to do that for a lot of jobs.
Washington State is weird with some stuff.
At the state level, we do, yeah.
Understand. Um, all right, so, uh, performance appraisals, I, I know that we just kind of talked about this offline, just out of curiosity, um, when Director Wolf resigned, there were a number of employees who had not had performance appraisal.
All senior staff.
All senior staff did not have performance appraisals last year whatsoever.
Correct.
Oh my God.
Right, and so in, in the interest of ensuring that people get feedback, which they deserve, um, yeah, they deserve it, I mean, it's, they, they are entitled to an appraisal of their important performance, um, you are currently working on?
I have asked all of our department heads to have their performance appraisals done by September first.
Okay, so meaning for themselves that they're creating one, or meaning?
That they're for their departments, that all, all employees in their departments are done by September first. That is also the goal for myself, to have the senior staff's appraisals done by September first as well.
Now, in, in previous years, I'm sorry if this is an ignorant question, but I'd rather just know, was it an end of year appraisal? Are we getting ourselves off track, how, or, or was it time-based?
The last, the last one, it was an annual review, I don't believe that there was ever a date put on it, the last one that I was given was by Director Walker, I believe it was in November before he left.
Okay.
And he, he did all of the senior staff before he left. Um, they have not had one done since then, so we are, I will get back, I will get on track with senior staff, you guys have to do it.
I think what the, what the employee handbook says is that an annual performance appraisal is required and, and it's basically based on when the, if the person arrives in February, then they're owed one by February. But if they get one done intermittently, like in September, then it would be the next September, so that's what the employee handbook specifies.
Okay, thank you.
So all of us have, all of us have needed to, to get on with those, so we've given ourselves the deadline to have all departments done with it.
Okay, that would be great, that's wonderful, and you, you had also said that you were updating the format as it relates to lifeguard ones, I believe. Is that, did I, okay, I'm like, did I get that right?
Yeah, the, the previous performance format that I used for the lifeguards was way too long, and Rhiannon and I have streamlined it to one that is much more comprehensive.
Are the ones for the department heads, I mean, are those good? Do, do you feel like that's a good, um, format?
I do not, I'm not going to use that format, I actually believe that I will use the format that, um, former Director Walker used when he did the senior staff.
Okay, so that's nothing in the handbook, an appendix to that, okay, okay.
No, it, it is, it's up to the department heads discretion, from what I understand. And I, I liked the, the format when I was given my performance appraisal by former Director Walker, I liked the format that he used and I found it was, uh, very helpful to me as an employee and was very comprehensive to, to see that the areas that I excelled in the year is, that need to be addressed, and I would like to use that with the senior staff as well.
Could you forward that to us too? Would you, would you please? Um, because I, I know, I, I'm not a big, I was not a big fan of the director appraisal form.
Me neither.
Okay, and, and it would be great, I mean, it, it would be great if at some point, and, and I know that this is on here too, but that we could look at perhaps adding that as an appendix, or adding the right form, approving a form and adding it to, as an appendix, because what it does for employees is they actually will see ahead of time what they will be evaluated on and.
Absolutely.
And that should be the case, okay. But, but in this case, it, it would also stop it from being a moving target and be consistent from year to year. I, I think it's great if we're making improvements, I think it's wonderful, bless you. Program development, um, we put this off last time.
Yeah, we did.
And, and we, if we, if we want to put it off again, we can certainly do that. Um, I, I know I'm not, I had some things I wanted to speak to, but I'm not prepared to do that tonight, so I was intending on pushing that off for myself from, for August.
I could see putting it off, I mean, it, it really just.
Go for it.
Yeah, I mean, there were just a couple of things, you know, I was looking to, because everybody has always talked about expanding the role of the Northwood Beach Park and Rec District, you know, outside of the, outside of the swimming pool and a lot of ideas have been tossed around, and one of the, one of the ideas that I had recently had to do with, with, was with baseball. My life this summer was all about baseball, and so we got to look in at, at baseball camps for, for, for Little Shane and, uh, Skagit Valley, uh, the Skagit Parks, you know, they, they run a baseball camp, I think the Bellingham Parks, they run a baseball camp, and I thought one of the things I noticed in, I mean, having been through Little League now three times, And I thought, one of the things I noticed in, I mean, having been through Little League now three times, you know, and, and you get to seeing the same cycle of, of things. You've got, and I hate to use it this way, because it kinda comes off negative, but the good old boy club, and, and you, you've got certain kids that maybe have that little bit of extra given to them, and then you've got this other group of kids, who maybe, you know, maybe they don't have a dad that's, that's able to, to teach them the game. And, and one of the things I noticed with some of these parks is doing hitting camps and pitching camps, and, and, and I don't know if it would be partnering with, with the Little League, or a standalone thing, you know, to where you brought, uh, coaching staffs from high schools in to help run the camp, you know, uh, as long as it was revenue neutral at least, you know, it might actually make you money, uh, but at least as if it paid for itself. And to, and to target possibly spring, like, right before baseball season starts. Maybe, maybe you start out with a hitting camp, a, a two-saturday, four-hour camp, to where the kids have an, have that little edge, right before the season starts, but where they're hitting the ball, you know, somebody has worked with them. And, and if it goes well, maybe you look to expand that, but that was just one little thought, uh, uh, of looking outside. We've got those two ball fields that are ours, you know, and I don't know if, if it was cold, you might want to partner with the school, to where you did it inside the high school gym, instead of using regular baseballs, you used the plastic balls, you know, and at the wiffle balls, there's a harder ball that you can use, you know, and especially if you, if you could hook up with a couple of high school coaches, maybe bring a college kid in from Bell, from Western or somewhere, and I'd like to start looking into some of that. And then, and then, you know, I got to thinking of other things, like, uh, like the dog park. How could you generate money to fix up that dog park, you know? Have, have we ever thought about working with a dog trainer? To where we do dog training out here, to where one night a week, you know, people, we have a dog trainer that works for the park, you know, and, and, you know, so much of, you'd have to cover that person's cost, but then the money that's left over gets poured right back into the dog park. Or maybe you do a dog show out of the, out of the ball fields, and once again, the money that's generated gets poured back into the dog park to help fix it up, and, I don't know, I'd really be interested, because I'm gonna be off this board soon. And, and unfortunately, I got swallowed up by, by N W A C, and, and the swimming pool, and, and my life, you know, the, the pool of eight years of this, and unfortunately, you know, there's a lot of things that I really didn't get to do. And, and maybe as a volunteer, working with this board, uh, doing things that I'm supposed to be doing in my life, and that is helping people, you know, working with kids, I would love, a- as this thing progresses towards December, to come back and talk to the board, as just a volunteer guy that, that could help you with some of that stuff, but, uh.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
And, and I've made this suggestion more than once already, because it's not tonight. So it's gonna sound pretty familiar, but, um, I, I, I think we have to, I, I think that, I, I would be surprised if there's anybody sitting at these tables that didn't want to, um, and, and I think, I, I think, um, Lynn Bott actually put it well, increased the footprint, um, of, of the district. I, I think we all probably want to do that, but I think we have to do it cautiously, but what I would say is, is that if you, uh, we, we also know that we don't have a lot of, uh, staff leeway at this point in time, so what my, what my plan was for the things that I'm interested in pursuing is to do a proposal to bring to the board for discussion.
Okay.
And so I would say that if you could, if you could take that off.
I will do that, I will. There is one last thing, and, and my boy brought this up, and it was, you've seen those, those projectors that they've got now, where you can basically watch a movie on your house?
Yeah.
They're awesome, right? Whether you do it outside, or whether you do it in the pool, man.
We tried that.
It didn't work?
It did not work.
Yeah?
Why not?
Because the, it, the sound, because of the echoes in here, even with the sound panels, it just didn't work. Which they showed off us, which didn't help, but.
All right, anyway, I get your point, it's putting something together, okay, I agree, all right.
Yeah, the, the sound panels just threw it off.
I will do that, thank you.
And I have ideas on that for you, Steve, I would, I would email you.
The, the thing too, Steve, is, is that you're clearly really passionate about these ideas, and so I think you're the best person at this point, even if we had, honestly, even if we had, like, let's say, staff bandwidth, I, I think you're the person to, to, to help try to move it forward at this point, because you feel passionately about it, and you have a vision in there that the rest of us don't have.
Can't you see a battle of the bands out there, can't you see that, man? Can't you see three-on-three basketball, right down the street, shut off the street?
What I was gonna tell you is, I think I worked for Amherst Parks and then for ten years, and they have a P Week program that does exactly what you're talking about.
I wanna talk to them.
Baseball thing, and then they also have the public movie thing, they do that every weekend in the summer, they have a thing over there.
Boogie Park.
Yeah, in the park, they do those exact, it's not as funny, because like, it's exactly what they do already.
Yeah, I went to one of those, it was awesome, it was good time.
They actually had one where it was a public movie outdoor, and then afterwards, all the kids went to the pool.
Sweet, that's awesome.
It was a movie in the swim.
I lifeguarded that.
You did?
I think so.
I wasn't there for that one.
That's awesome.
Yeah, cool, excellent, and thank you. Yeah, absolutely, you know what, we're, we're open, we love help.
I thought he was, I thought he was a random guy off the street.
Who suddenly became into, yeah, we just thought you were bored.
Yeah, I actually was listening to these for three and a half hours now.
I know, we just thought you were bored.
We could have given you a real pen.
That's all right.
Or that you didn't, or that you didn't speak English, either one.
I just didn't realize that was a pen, I just thought, that's kind of a random thing, so it's like, okay, cool. No judgment here.
Moving on from that one, um, meeting materials timeline, um, can, can we, can we figure out when we're gonna get our things before the meeting?
I haven't, if our local commissioners would do their part, that would be most appreciated.
Ooh.
I know, I'm sorry. It's kind of one of those things, since I took over my part of this back in January, I have emailed for the agenda repeatedly, and it's always, if I'm lucky, the Monday before the meeting usually when we receive it, so we can have our part ready to go.
Here's what I, Wendy and I talked about this, and so, one of my plans is, as the secretary, if I get my minutes done, um, I.
When you get caught up on your minutes.
When I get caught up on the minutes, I will put together a draft agenda based on what we haven't finished discussing, so it'll just have unfinished business, and the new business will be up to the commissioner, or the chairman, to come up with. But I'll give, I'll send that list to him, so then he'll have something to start with, he won't have to build it, and I will do that two weeks out.
Okay, and I apologize, I did not mean that to sound snotty, it's.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's just, um, you know, I really feel like we've had a lot of pressure put on us to get these things out, like, we're failing somehow, but we all have to work together as a team.
Well, I think, I, I think the thing that you have to recognize though is, is I asked several months ago, if we have reports, get them out to us. And, and we did that one or two months, and then, I mean, even, honestly, Julie, but hold on, uh, even tonight, there's stuff, well, it's in there. It wasn't in the last one, so I'm not sure, did, did we get, if, if we did, I'm unaware of it, did we get a whole new packet of materials? That, that includes exactly what's in here? If we did, if we did, great, I didn't realize it was different from what we walked away with.
From what you walked away with, it is a little bit different, because what was emailed out a week ago was updated, to include some things that had not quite been, um, had not quite been as they needed to be.
And see, we didn't, we didn't get those, they were not, they were not emailed to us, because I looked, and so I went with what I had got emailed last week, the day before the meeting.
The only thing that's different in this packet from that is Joanne and I went ahead and added the, um, these pages of the revised 2015 budget. The only other difference between that and what was emailed out to you should be the one line about public records requests. Everything else should be identical.
Can, can I propose that, right, but part of it is, unfortunately, unless I print out both packets and go through them with a fine-tooth comb, I don't know anything's different. But, can I, can I make a proposal, which is, if you are not receiving the agenda in a timely fashion, what I would ask you to do, and I don't think there's anything inappropriate or impertinent about this, is, is notify all of the board members, um, so that we can in fact follow up and say, hey, you know, for example, if, 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 if I'm the vice chair, and the chair isn't able to get to it, do you need me to do this, do I need to do this for you, but, so that, one, we're all aware that you're on top of it, um, because I understand your point, is you feel, you feel like we're saying, you're not doing your job, and we're not, we're trying to just make sure that we don't have a mistake like we did last time, number one. And that you have what you need, by the way, I don't think any of us wants you to try to pretend that, you know, gee, I don't have the inputs I need, um, to be creating the package.
So this is kind of what we have, two Thursdays prior to a regular monthly meeting, a reminder will be sent to the board chair for the agenda, the board secretary for the minutes, and all senior staff for their staff reports. We can CC the rest of you on that, so that everyone gets that reminder. And then, agenda minutes and staff reports will be due to the director and admin email no later than five P M. the following Monday, so that gives you the weekend to get your.
Sorry, I, where is this in our packet?
It's not, this is.
Okay, so you're gonna email this to us, okay.
Yeah, I can make copies of this.
Oh, please, I, I would actually prefer it emailed, because that way we're not dependent on the packet.
And then, um, agenda with materials will be sent out via email by eight P M. the Thursday prior to the regular monthly meeting. Meeting notice with agenda will also be posted in the facility at that time, and the website will be updated with meeting notice and a link to the agenda by five P M. the Friday prior to the regular meeting, as long as we can access the website to update it.
Well, and we have to assume that that's okay, I mean, we have to assume that we can, I understand that we might have technical problems, but.
So that's what we've outlined as our goal.
Thank you.
Um, we can piecemeal stuff to you guys, I don't know if we want to piecemeal.
To everyone.
All different pieces to our whole distribution list.
Because they don't have to review it to discuss it in a meeting.
Correct.
I mean, they can review it, but, right, but, but that's the hard part.
And I'm happy for them to review it, I just say that they don't have to, and we have to.
But honestly, if we can all as a team get really good at this, there will not be the need to piecemeal.
Yes.
And, and I would love to, I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm a really visual person, and so, reading something to me is just, honestly, I, I was trying to pay attention. It would be great, and thank you, because truly, I agree with you in the fact that I, we all want this to succeed, including you, we know that, right? And we don't want to set you up to feel like, that you can't succeed because of the constraints that, of what you're given. And so please, but please, if you don't have the agenda, please let us all know.
It is not at all snotty, you're helping us do what we need you to do to help us.
And remember also.
So I can craft the list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's one thing to also remember.
To Donna Sue, apparently, I'm just kidding.
If you're not getting the information that you need, to sit there and say it goes on for a year and stuff like that, you know, you hear grumbling from us off and on, and say Erica is still the, you know, the acting director and stuff like that, and she goes, hey, well, you haven't done this, blah, 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 and if you don't sit there and tell us every time that you're not getting this stuff from us, how can you sit there and tell her, well, hey, look, I didn't get this from them because of this error, well, I've been here, you know, keeps everybody above par.
And that's exactly what was going on in the office, hey, what do we know about this, what do we have going on, what have we heard from this person?
So can I ask you real quick, as far as when this meeting's over, and I hope this isn't jumping, but that, that YouTube, when do you upload this audio file? Because back in March of 2013, probably timeframe, we set this up, and it was supposed to be done pretty much, like, like, probably Monday.
You know?
Yeah, it was in the best interest of open government, so people could immediately.
People who missed the meeting, well, and I guess if that's not on your list, if you could.
And I will admit, I was never given any firm timeline on that.
You probably weren't, because that stuff got lost with.
Let's add that to the, add that to your list, yeah.
I would prefer it to be by the end of the day Tuesday.
That's fine, let's do that.
If we could do that as well as.
And nothing's set in stone, I mean, if something happens, but that should be the target, and it, and it is in the best interest of open government.
A normal, just for an example, a normal two-hour meeting for us to get that up on YouTube, if the recorder on the computer is anywhere between two to three hours.
Okay.
So it, it takes a long time to come up.
Well, why don't we say by the end of Wednesday then? If you guys are cool with that.
Sure.
Usually, we, usually we set it up overnight, we.
There you go.
We usually do it overnight.
Sure. All right, we have, um, staff reports. Oh, employee handbook, sorry, see, I got, uh, employee handbook.
Um, and actually, Eric and I haven't talked about in, I don't know, we, and it's, it's, and I've had, we've had many phone, and it keeps, I keep forgetting to talk about it, it's like, until we get a new acting director, it's like, there are other priorities that you need to be working on. So I'm backing off on forcing Erica to upgrade the handbook, until we get a new director, and then, in my opinion, the two of us should continue it, and then you can go over with the new acting director, who is gonna be like, oh, that's a great way to do it, I'm sure, and then we'll present it to the board. So it's on hold until we get a new acting director, so that Erica actually has time to put into it.
Or until I have time to, to, to get it, because I know some of the changes that we've made, it's not too time-consuming for me to go in red line then.
Okay.
And if I have, if I have extra time, I'll, I'll do it.
I, I just think.
During the summer.
It's prioritization, it's, it's a very low priority compared to.
Some of the other stuff.
Yeah, so.
And during the summer, that's probably really good, because with the SARS busyness.
Exactly.
It makes, it makes sense to do that.
Yeah.
As things wind down, I may have more time to poke at it a bit more, along with the budget.
Yeah, it, it, well, and then, you know, the, the budget, and the, and the.
I've got that format already, I think I'm gonna be, uh, uh, sliding.
All right, staff reports.
It's on page, it's on page two, it's on. Oh, good, because I had a question for that. I thought I missed my opportunity. I confirmed what it was that I wanted to ask. Oh, that's that one.
Really, um, just to, I'm not gonna go over my whole report, you guys are able to read. Um, just a couple of things that I did want to draw attention to, just because they're, they're really cool, is I attended the Military Family Expo on June twenty-eighth on N A S Woodbee, it was a lot of fun. I spoke with a bunch of military families about our lesson and swim team programs, and other programs that we have to offer. Uh, I was able to meet a bunch of our new military families that are just in town for the first time, and got them hooked up with schedules and information on our pool, and on our dog park, and on our baseball fields, as a matter of fact, as well.
Excellent.
Um, since we did.
Can I, can I ask a question, it's like, you attended the Military Family Expo, so did you actually have a booth?
I did, I set a booth up, and I sat at it, it was me and my, my ferret, we had a great time together.
Awesome, okay.
Yes, we did, uh, since the implementation of the new M W R and V R C sponsorships, uh, June first is when the, the new M W R contract kicked in, uh, we have seen nearly triple the number of individuals taking part. So things went absolutely crazy with the amount of military families that are using the pool, we've almost tripled the numbers.
Yay.
What's V R C?
Uh, Veterans Resource Center.
Oh, okay.
Um, this is compared to our May fifteen numbers, so when we looked at our May, May fifteen numbers, our May numbers compared to our June numbers, we saw nearly the triple, triple of the amount of the military.
What's the V R C sponsorship, sorry?
Veterans Resource Centers, they allow.
Stands for?
Yeah, it was for disabled vets, where they can come in, sit there and swim for, I don't wanna say free, but basically, it's like the M W R were reimbursed.
Okay, I just, I don't remember discussing that anytime recently, but.
I talked to the gentleman when he promoted this here with E F W.
It was a Gino thing.
No, it was Director Walker.
Was it the board?
It was probably.
I remember discussions about it, but it was before I was on the board, yeah.
So, uh, I did ask, I did let M W R know that their cap of twenty-one thousand for the year was going to be very quickly surpassed, and they did send a revised contract, I did notify them again in writing that, uh, we, we may adjust our prices, and they, they, when it came back and said, yes, they were aware of that, and to let them know, and we decided to do that. But they have, they have done a revised contract to reflect a larger number, which they are gonna be seeing with that program. So it's been really neat to see, we've also seen a marked increase in our aerobics as well, even though they don't cover that, because they're covering the open swims for the family, they're turning that money around, thinking participating in other programs.
Excellent, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Quick, quick question, I know you sat there and said you were out at the base when they had their yearly expo and stuff. And I know, if I remember correctly, you give information to the, uh, what is it? Anyway, one way I should, Chamber, thank you, uh, do you also go and give information to the base when they hold their monthly meetings for new personnel to head down here?
We, we do, the Chamber actually stuffs the indulg base for us.
That's right, I forgot that, thank you.
So we, we make sure that we have all of the information to them every time their indulg base goes out.
Good, thank you.
How was the, um, was, how was the class, was it helpful, was it?
It was informative, we're looking very forward to part two. We have some major work to do.
Excellent, so QuickBooks course that Julian, Joanne took la, two weeks ago?
Last week.
Last week, okay, last week, excellent.
Um, we filed the Washington State Auditor's Annual Report for twenty thirteen, and so, that's basically one that Erin didn't do again, because, okay.
I'm correct.
And did we, did we get penalized for that, are we gonna get penalized for that, are we in trouble, are they coming, coming?
I don't know, I honestly don't know, when, I received the email, I emailed, um, the city auditor's office, and they, because I told them I have no idea of what this is, and nobody here knows what's happening, so she emailed me a schedule of what I'm supposed to fill out, and gave me the login to our account, and I found what Phil Walker did.
For twenty twelve.
For twenty twelve, so, and it's basically the schedule that she sent me, and I just had.
Thank you.
Bless your heart.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did we say it already tonight, you're awesome, you're doing a great job.
I thought it very diligently, and since the auditor's office, the state auditor's office is in a state of flux right now, they were a little more forgiving.
That's right, I forgot about that, okay.
Yes, it is.
They've been very, they've been very willing to help us as we've been facing some challenges as well.
Good.
Can I go to a, oh, sorry, uh, can we, uh, sorry, let me just ask, can, can we use a standard form for this? Um, what seems to happen is, is if there's no report, then it just gets deleted, and it seems like if we use a template for every program, so for example, if we add Silver Sneakers, if we add, um, the, the fitness club is not in here, um, and it, it shouldn't.
And I'm not quite sure why it's deleted, because usually I do, like, I do have aerobics, no report received.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure where it got deleted to, but.
Okay, as long as we have the same one every time, and exactly, that, that would be great. Okay, as, as long as we have the same one every time, and exactly, that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. I just...
May I bring something up? On that director's report, um, just to throw it out there, you also, well, the, the Northern Tewa Park District, um, received a certificate from the transition program at the high school, I believe.
That was gonna go on my August report since I got it in July.
Okay, okay. Well, I just wanted, that was a big...
I was going to wave it around.
Well, you wave it, girl.
Way to spoil the surprise, yeah.
Watch this, watch this, watch this. Can I say something? No, you can't say anything. I gotcha.
I'm glad that you worked that out on your own there, Steve.
No problem.
I did receive the order.
Did you hear that?
It's back in my...
No, it's rewinding.
All right, so let's expedite some things here.
It is late.
It is, no, it is.
Aerobics, no report received, but it's like, so we don't have a, a head aerobics person, right? But, so you're just doing all this, yeah, your third half, like I said. So, um, that's all going fine without Michelle?
It is, it is going very well with, without Michelle. I mean, it would be nice to have Michelle here, mind you. However, um, she, she did leave the, the program pretty well organized, and I have been able to, I met with the instructors. We sat down, we created a schedule that they were all happy with, uh, taking the classes that were already scheduled on our schedule and divvying them up between, between the instructors. They were all there at the meeting. They were all agreeing and happy, and, oh, here, if I take this, you take that. We had a great time together. And as we have, are proposing the schedule for the fall and the winter, they're going to come down together with me again, and we're going to play with it, with their...
And you found a Zumba instructor, 'cause we didn't have one before, right?
Michelle actually found her right before she left.
Oh, okay.
And had just finished the training and the check-in process with her, uh, before Michelle turned in her notice. And her name is Catherine, and she's awesome.
Okay.
Awesome, awesome. If you haven't taken one of her classes, applause, I'm gonna have a heart attack. She's awesome.
Okay.
Looked like you had some fast swims.
We did have some fast ones from the swim team.
Yep.
We did. We had, we had, we had a, had some good means.
Can I, um, and just for you guys, this sounds ridiculous, a question or request. We get these numbers for the attendance reports. We've been, and I remember that there were issues with how valid some of the numbers were in it before.
It was a, um, a...
Right, because the cashiers were, yeah. But now that we've got some more validity to them, can we start graphing them to show, you know, whether things stay the same or they change?
I think that, if I remember correctly, August was the year when I switched to this format. So once we rolled to August, then I will be able to do a yearly comparison. I can do a month-to-month comparison if you want to see that.
I think probably both wouldn't stand out.
Okay, but it'll be August before, yeah, last month, last year.
Versus this month, and then year to year, yeah.
So it'll be August before I can do the annual.
Oh, yeah, you're not supposed to sign it.
Because I think that's when I started.
Well, he should, he could, well...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you do sign it, 'cause you're working.
Yeah, if you would just write your name in the bottom after you sign it.
Oh, that's what you...
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, but, um, but yeah, it's like, if you have it in graph form, it, it helps me look at things visually. Um, and, and, and then we can see especially for month-to-month, and then from the year before at the same time, since we started in August, it's like, huh, we're significantly different, or we're the same as last August. Both of them say something to us, the board, as we're making decisions. And then I would, I would suggest that the active-duty numbers, 'cause we, do we, do we know the active-duty people when they come in, that they're doing laps from open to, just based on their times, I would think we would have to.
We could know, well, yes and no. We can know, um, that that's, we're checking, I mean, they have a timestamp now. So previously, we would not have known. Now, starting June 1, we will be able to kind of reach an idea.
Okay.
Um, based on the time they're signing in.
Can we wait on that, though? I mean, meaning, uh, 'cause I, that, that sounds labor-intensive.
Honestly, it's probably going to be... You know, you might be looking realistically October and November before you really see a switch over on this, um, to be able to start generating... Well, August I started, so maybe September, because...
Right.
If we, if we could see the additional numbers first, I, I think that's all I'm suggesting, is let's change, if we change one thing at a time.
Okay.
And again, we don't want...
Well, if, if we're asking for, we're asking for comparisons, we'll prever...
Oh, okay.
Current month to previous month, or it's really previous month to previous, previous month, and, as well as, uh, year to year, you know, month, you know...
Of just these numbers?
Right.
Yeah, and don't break out the active-duty at this time.
Yeah, I mean, let's look at what we have and determine the next level of...
Active-duty's broken out, not by their swim, like what they were here for here, but in the computer, we're trying to get them entered in.
Okay.
Honestly, if you have one person there at the desk, and you have 40 people in your lobby, which that's how it fitting on the swim.
Sure.
I have one person trying to verify all those IDs, get people checked in, run credit, run cash.
Okay.
Um, with really, really slow internet and a computer that spins like this for, you know, several seconds before it advances. So I've told my front desk people, you know, don't focus so hard on getting every one of those active-duty or family members in the computer, so I can't really use those as valid numbers.
Okay. And that's why I, you know, I said it's impossible, but...
It is. It would be pretty labor-intensive. We would have to actually go through the check-in sheets